Five thirty-two. We have public input and scenes how we have lovely people in the audience today. Would anyone like to? Okay.
Oh, great.
I'll put a mic up there and take a hair off.
Sean Delaney, Seven Dicks Road. I'm here this evening because I think, as everyone knows, it's Mel Webster's last meeting. He is, well, hasn't sold his home yet. He's bought a home, but he hasn't sold a home yet.
That's Andy's fault.
Leaving town. Look, I got involved in a number of years ago, and a couple of first guys I met was the guy to my right, Jerry Venezia, the guy whose last meeting is Mel Webster. I mean, these are two titans of public education, particularly in North Reading, for decades. Long after their kids were out of the public school systems, these guys put years and years of dedication in and work into improving the education system here in our town. And I think the town owes both of them a debt of gratitude, but for tonight, it's Mel's night. Mel, I think we really got to know each other when the building we're sitting in was in its infancy stage, and we're pulling our hair out of our head, and we spent many a night together on weekends with a whole group of people, a lot of them who are here this evening. And I can say that without Mel Webster, we may not be sitting in the building that we're sitting in, or we may not have cheers, and we may not have stadium seating, we may not have seats in the auditorium, and a whole bunch of things that could have happened if it wasn't for Mel Webster. So, Mel, on behalf of myself and my family, my two kids that, I think my daughter's going to graduate in a couple of months, that have gone through the system here, Delaney's thank you, and I think the town of North Reading thanks you. Two guys, tough to fill their position. Obviously, there'll be other board members, but there's a lot of institutional knowledge that walks out the door this evening that we've lost over the last two years with Jerry leaving and now Mel leaving. No, it's not a disparaging comment to those that are here. I'm sure you're going to do a terrific job, but everyone's got to recognize the institutional knowledge that walks out of this building tonight is just tremendous. Everyone else has some large shoes to fill. I'm sure you can do it and continue the tradition that these gentlemen have set in terms of the educational level in the town of North Reading. Thank you again. It's like, I don't know, Siskel and Ebert, Maverick Costello, you know, Brady and Bill.
You were the Three Stooges.
Yeah, well, sometimes it could be three, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean.
Andy Schultz, Forest Central Street. Mel was not going to be here tonight. He was not feeling well until Sean and I shamed him in the coming this afternoon through text messaging. Mel, you're going to be missed. It's big shoes to fill. What, you've been noticed for I don't know how many years, and I don't know how many nights you've missed dinner with your family or going to committees or this thing or that thing, and the hours that you put in. And we all know it can be a thankless job, and the hours that you spend, and we joke about social media, but you spend explaining things on social media to people at 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night. It's invaluable. You've been a great advocate to the town. I can't believe I'm saying all these nice things about you. You're going to be missed, and both you and Jerry. Like I said, the board's in good hands, but they'd lose two good people, too. Wish you the best of luck in your new home.
Thank you.
And hopefully, we can sell yours on Monday.
I'm counting on you to get that figured out for me, Attorney Schultz.
Is this one working?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Mel, I'm here, and I have the honor, on behalf of the board, to thank you for your 15 years of service to the community. I believe it was 15. And I know you did other things before you were on the school committee. I've served for nine years of your 15 years, so I've been with you for this long run, and I've witnessed it with my own eyes, the transition that we've done. 15 years isn't a lot of time when you step back and you look at the amount of money you spent for the town.
That's true.
But it's, but, you know, Mel, and I think you will agree with me on this, in the positions when we came on the boards 15 years ago, and Mr. Delaney was there, and you started, and I came in nine years ago, you know, we all learned what happens when you keep saying "no," right? What costs, what the cost means when you say "no." And we're living in it here. And we're so fortunate that you advocated, you and your board members advocated so hardly to, not only this school, but look at the transitions that we made even at the batch elder, right? That's, and you guys did that under budget, under schedule. I mean, there's a lot more than just this school that you were part of and your other fellow members were. And the community owes you a lot, because even myself today, the value of my home has increased significantly. And I have this conversation with seniors a lot, because they talk about the impacts to their taxes because of the schools, but they're not looking at it right. The schools have actually saved our seniors and saved our community, because it's now, these values that we put in these schools are returned in our homes. And it's a positive all across, and we're able to give a 21st century education to our children. So, that has a lot to do with you and your fellow board members, so you should take a lot of pride in that. It's a great mark. It's a great tribute to you, and I want to thank you again for your service.
I appreciate the selectmen being here. I think that, over the years, the departments, the various boards in town have forged a great relationship, which is one of the keys to why the town has moved forward so rapidly over the past, you know, five to 10 years. So, I appreciate you guys being here. Thanks.
We apologize for running out. We have a six o'clock meeting.
You have a meeting, I know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And there ends the difference between the school committee and the board of select.
Thank you, Mel. Thanks.
Jerry Venezia, I had the pleasure and the privilege of serving 14 years of being on the school committee. I'm not sure how I did that, but we became good friends, as well as colleagues. And again, not slighting the people that are on the committee now, because they're doing a great job, or the people I served with in the past. I think the difference between Mel and all the people that I've served with is that Mel brought his A-game to every single meeting. Every single school committee meeting, every single athletic subcommittee meeting, financial planning team meeting, school building committee meeting, athletic facilities committee meeting, contract negotiations. Mel was always the most prepared. He was always the most informed, well-informed, and he was always the most passionate. And at times, Mel's passion could boil over, and he would end up out on the ledge. And I found the best way to deal with that was to say, "Go ahead, Mel, jump. Just jump." And he would stop and think about it, and he would come back, and he would settle down, and we would get business completed. Mel, it was never about a personal agenda with Mel. Everything he did was on behalf of the students in North Reading. I can't ever remember him once pushing anything that wasn't, in his opinion, in the best interest of the students. I think something people don't know about, and I hope Kathy's not at home listening, is Mel...
You're not going to tell about my girlfriend now, are you? Come on, that's not supposed to be for the meeting.
Don't give yourself away. But again, Mel's generosity. I can't tell you, and I'm not even sure, of how much he contributed from his own funds to the athletic teams in this, at the high school, to the performing arts, which he supported, to the MACs. I think, you know, again, people have said it before me, but I don't think the school, department or the school district would be in as good a shape as it is now if it wasn't for Mel. I mean, he's done a tremendous job. He'll be sorely missed. And again, I have full confidence in the remainder of the board. I'd like to acknowledge Scott Buckley, who, in a matter of two years, has managed to drive me out and then Mel. Two consecutive years. I can't help but think Janine's close behind. I don't know how you're doing it, Janine. But again, Mel, thanks. I mean, I don't want to take any more time, but I just think that the contribution you made to the school department over the last 15 years is, it's unparalleled, really.
I appreciate Jerry, and I will say Jerry and I were probably two of the first school committee members to almost both simultaneously get thrown out of a state playoff softball game. But he blamed me for yelling when he was doing it. That always happened. He would say I was the one making the noise. But it was great working with you, and you have a lot to be proud of, too, for what you did on the committee for those long 19 years. Thanks.
Jerry, could you hand it?
Patrick Daley, Assistant Superintendent. Mel, I just want to thank you for all your service. And my thoughts go back to when I first came into this role, there was eight million things coming down the pike from the state. And I remember, I think we kind of got to know each other a little bit better. We were over at Merrimack College, talking about next-generation assessments, and conversations spilled out into the parking lot. But I echo what Jerry said about, you know, always, you had a lot of ideas and opinions, but they were well-researched and well-thought-out, and I think you always brought that to the table, and I really appreciated that, and it was great working with you. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Patrick. And it's, I think we're in good hands with you as our Assistant Superintendent, and I'm glad that we were able to help make that happen along with John four years ago. I think it was a great move.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. And everybody mentioning how prepared I was. When you don't have a life, it's easy to be prepared. You know? Anyway.
Deanna Castro, Nine Broadway. When I moved to town a long time ago, one of the first school-related meetings I went to was for "Save Our Schools."
Oh, yeah.
And Mel was very much a part of that. And I thought, "Oh, my gosh, I think I moved to the wrong town." And then I went to my first hood school, Parents Association meeting, and Jean Westervelt was talking about the Swan Pond School and that whole trouble, and I thought, "I really moved to the wrong town." And then I thought, "Okay, well, if you can't beat them, you've got to join them." And Marcy Bailey kind of strung me along to get involved, and I was just saying to Jeff Simons, "I have no regrets for all the work that we've all done together collectively with everybody in this room, administration, people who have volunteered, people who are advocates. I think that we've done an amazing job together." That wasn't always easy. That was a lot of sitting in living rooms and going to teas and coffees and doing a lot of advocacy work. But not only did we do it here in North Reading, but we took our fight to the state level, and you always supported every single thing that we wanted to do through North Reading for United for Education and Stanford Children, and I totally appreciate that. And this goes for you, too, Jerry. I mean, I just think that, you know, we are a very blessed and fortunate community for so many reasons, not the least of which is the people who step up when there is a problem and a challenge, and they refuse to, you know, have the obstacles stay in the way. And the building we're in is just another perfect example of something that is so huge, but it's such a huge success story, and so much of that has to do with you. And I echo what Jerry said about, the decisions you've made have always been in the best interest of our students, and, you know, my family and our community owes you a debt of gratitude for all of the, all that you've done. I really appreciate it. And I also have to say that with the state-level work that we've done, what you've all created in cooperation and in partnership with the finance planning team and everything has just, it's made such huge inroads, and I just want to encourage you all to continue down that road. And I'm looking forward to what the new board members will do, you know, with your guidance and the supervision that you provided them along the way. So, thank you. You're going to be very much missed.
Thank you.
I appreciate your friendship.
It's Jeff and Marcy. We do everything. We're going to tag-team this. You want to start?
All right, sir. I guess when we got to know you, Mel, and when we started, our schools were good, but they needed saving. And we were young.
Yes.
And the bad news is, perhaps, we're not so young anymore, but we're still around.
Yeah.
And the really, really good news is, is that our schools no longer need saving. They need maintaining because of all the good work that you've done, that Jerry's done, that everyone at the table and many, many people in this room have done. And it's the previous generation of students, I think, the current generation and future generations, who are going to really benefit from not only the buildings that they're in, but the passion that you gave, and I never feed a Jerry, so I feel bad, and Jerry and everyone here, the passion and the, when the going got tough, you really got going. You got in that budget book, you got down and got your pencil out and got down to the specifics, and advocated, 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 until there was no more advocacy left to be done. And I admire that and will always, always admire that. And as a resident of town, whether I have students in the school or don't, which I no longer do, I will always be grateful for that and be humbled by that. And I thank you, and I'm very happy for you and Kathy, but I'm sad for North Reading that you're leaving us.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mel. Remember, the first time I met you was, I think, maybe in the town hall, little cafetorium. It was one of the SOS meetings.
Oh, yeah.
You know, when we had first, Marcy and I really kind of got going with the building end of things, and you really stepped up on the budget end of things. And I'm so proud of the work that all of us did, but I think, you know, with the people that you, the passion that you brought in, and the people that were really focused on budget. And then we had already kind of started work on the Little in the Hood School, and as Deanna said, moving on to the new school. And it created a team that, you know, without that team, without the folks that you brought in, the folks that we brought in, I don't know if we're sitting here today. You know, there's just so many things that happened as a result of Sean. I mean, I remember Sean at that same meeting. Select people, school committee people, the building committee people, our ballot question committee folks, Deanna, all these people, all came from those sort of different angles. And, you know, you really brought that passion in there as well, and so really appreciate that and all the things that the school committees and building committees and everybody else has been able to do over the years, budget hearings, those meetings. Been a lot of meetings together. But the results are here. And on a personal note, want to thank you, too, for your support for inclusion over the years. You've been a great supporter there. It was, your picture's on my wall and my family, actually, because you handed Nate his diploma.
That's right.
So, you have a special place in our heart, too. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Oh, no. This can't be good.
Julie Kopke, Five Elbow Road. Mel, thank you for your passion, your generosity, your diligence when we needed that support and that knowledge when we were making some tough decisions over the years. I appreciate the mentorship you gave me as a newcomer, and I wish you well in your new home, and please don't be a stranger, because we'll miss you greatly.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it, Julie. Thanks.
That was a whole 10 minutes of love on Mel.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Thank you, appreciate it. Like the student, like the student gets to leave after the student...
Oh, yeah, sorry. That goes to the student rep. Next on the agenda is the student report.
Quickly, thank you.
Oh, definitely.
I just want to, two quick things. I have one major regret, and that is that I'm not able to finish my final term, but building schedules and closing schedules got in the way of me being able to stay through May. In fact, we'll be moving on Thursday, which is probably why I didn't feel well today, because I think I've gotten about five hours' sleep in the last week getting everything organized, along with my wife. And then the second thing, just to echo what a lot of people said, this is a great, this community has rallied around the school system for the past 20 years or so. And it's been, not only the committee, but, you know, administration, teachers, students, and most importantly, the residents who took an interest in making this a better school system. And, you know, not to, I don't have to do this anymore because I'm leaving, but I think the best decision we made in the last 15 years was to stick to our guns, some of us, and make John Bernard Superintendent of Schools, because he's the finest principal I've ever worked with, and I think he's going to end up being the finest superintendent this district has ever seen. So, I just want to close on that. I want to thank everybody, and I'm going to miss it here. I do promise to be back at least once in a while for lunch with those knuckleheads and the guys that left, but...
Long ride.
Yeah, it is a long ride. You guys can come up and sit and watch the boats that I don't own from the deck. But I'm hoping to make friends with people who own boats, and I'll provide the refreshments. So, but thanks, everybody, again.
Thank you, Mel.
Before you all leave, we're going to do the presentation a little bit early, and then we'll get right back on track. Okay?
Is it mine?
It is yours.
It's my bowl?
It is.
Jerry, I got a bowl!
Well, let's see, make sure.
All right.
Is it a fruit bowl? A punch bowl?
Ooh, look at, there it is. Excuse me. I'm a fine spot in my new home. I'll have to find one. Thank you very much.
Committee?
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Would you like to step up front real quick?
With who?
Us?
We can do it. We can take a picture later.
Will you want to take a picture?
Take a picture afterwards. I don't know if they want to be in the picture.
No.
We'll take a picture later. All right. Thanks, guys.
Bridgette has homework.
Okay.
And the students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mel just wanted, Mel just wanted to make Jerry right. Jerry said he wouldn't last a year without us. He said, "We wouldn't last a year without you."
And he was right.
Thank you for your indulgence.
We have, for the student report, Bridgette Gru, class of 2020, and she will report on what's going on.
Right on. Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Webster. Personally, you do so much for the performing arts department, and you have no idea how many times we say, "Mr. Webster and Ms. Sullivan are just the best people ever."
My wife is so sad to be leaving.
Well, you feel that sadness, too. And you guys are wonderful, and all you do for us is so greatly appreciated. So, thank you, thank you. So, we're very excited. We have two weeks left in the quarter. I have a lot of exciting news in this week's report. Not so exciting, MCAS is coming up, so everyone's gearing up for that. Math is going to be May 21st and 22nd, and ELA, MCAS is March 26th and 27th. And then Biology is June 4th and 5th. We also have the AP Practice exams coming up. Those are run by whichever teacher instructs the AP course, and it's just to kind of gear people up for the actual exams, which are in May. Each exam is very specific, so that way you have a practice and you kind of understand how it's going to run. And then everyone is also in the course of their course selection right now, figuring out which classes they'll be taking next year. And that's with your regular teachers that you have right now, and then also with the Guidance Department. Athletic Matters, the spring season is starting today, so everyone was getting ready. A little chilly to start for the spring, but I think everyone was excited. And then, since the last time you had a student here, Billy Lord placed fifth in the 60-meter hurdles at Nationals, so he's fifth in the country, which is pretty exceptional. So, obviously, we're very proud of him there. Maskers competed at prelims for the State Drama Fest competition and then moved on to semis as well. We were very happy to receive a few awards for that. Sam Jenta and Mateo Flores both received Excellence in Acting Awards. The entirety of the ensemble also received an acting award. And then, for Projection, Design, and Execution, Alyssa Krugnall, Hannah Delaney, who's a actress, and Avery DeRozier's hand-drew, animated, and created footage that went along with the entirety of the show, which was pretty cool. And then Preston Laidotes also won an award at the semifinal round, and we also won an award for Puppetry, Design, and Execution, which you'll see coming in just a few minutes, for Brandon DeKleen, Allison Rabideau, and Matty Corey. Notorious came in second place in the Northeast as part of ICHSA, which is the a cappella competition that is countrywide. It's very exceptional. They're second out of the entire Northeast region, so we're very, very proud of them there. And Rachel Schleidenhoffen, Austin Stemejna, and Sam Jenta won an award for Best Arrangement for one of the songs in their piece. Nesrin Ordeal, Kat Capone, Laura Buscemi, Griffin May, and Ali Graybar all had Art Accepted into a Congressional Art Show that's going to be at the Montserrat Gallery, so we're also very excited there. Lots of fun art things happening right now. Stu Coe is also doing amazing. It's been a good month so far. March is really going well. They went to Hyannis, which is the statewide leadership conference for different student councils, and Frances Walsh and Justin Heinz, who are both seniors, won awards there. And then Nesrin Ordeal designed the conference T-shirt, which is pretty awesome. And then Lizzie Barrett, who you all know from presenting here, was elected to be a delegate to the Northeast School Council, like Board, so very exciting there, and they did awesome. Everyone said it was a great time, so that's wonderful. And then just some other things happening around school. The Reality Fair is on Thursday. It's run by the Rotary Club for Juniors and gives taste of reality, so that should be exciting. An eco team is doing a shoe drive, and the Book Club is doing a book drive that are both benefiting local charities. And Science Olympiad is competing in Framingham on Saturday, so lots of fun stuff. And then I have a little bit of non-traditional student work today. So, this is work I've done both in our class and school, Advanced Technical Theater, and then also something we do outside of school with maskers. So, here are blueprints. These are all from the most recent shows, so you can kind of get an idea of the sketching and drafting we do there. And then, I am not artistic enough to do this, but Brandon, Matty, and Al, who I mentioned earlier, received an award for puppetry. These are some of their scale models for the Making of Aslan, which was a massive lion puppet we had on stage. It's not this little. And so, I want to give you a little taste of, sometimes it's not just like writing an essay, but sometimes you're doing more hands-on work, and a lot of this will be going in people's portfolios...
Yeah.
...when they apply to college, if they're looking to go into anything art-based. So, it says, "Do not touch," but that rules being...
That rules being...
...for you guys.
That's excellent.
And then I brought another scale model, but it's a little big, so it's in the hallway if anyone, like, really wants to see it. And I'll get it later.
So, what did this turn out to be?
So, it's...
The diagram?
Yeah, so each...
Massive set.
Yeah. So, each diagram on there is one platform, and then we put them all together, and we poured resin, and we ran LED lights under it, so there were, like, light rivers on top. And then we put the words of the script all over it, and it was this, like, large oval kind of thing, and that was the basis of the set.
From the site, I thought this was, like, some kind of heart or something.
Yeah, right.
But it's a lion. It's really very cool.
I think that's another thing that, the direction that our arts, arts department and our arts for the whole district have taken over the last five years, 10 years, has just been phenomenal. Just taken off.
Quite a performance.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
I saw the preview of The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe, and in the, in the competition, one, part of the competition is you have to build your set in a very small time window.
Like, five minutes to put it all together.
So, that set you see sketched out there comes whipping out from the wings and comes together in five minutes, and it's, and it was very impressive to see even in that preview, which was probably one of the first times you'd done it for, as a performance, but the complexity was impressive, given the limitations.
Thank you.
The preparation that, with the preparation, I mean, you have to break it down in a certain amount of time, too.
Yeah.
So, you talk about life lessons and, you know, with your schoolwork and getting an education, but the lessons that you get in cooperation and leadership, et cetera, from this kind of thing.
Can we do this?
Exactly, yeah. It's great.
I have no idea how many spreadsheets I have gone on. Sorry. Are there any questions I can answer for anyone?
I think it was great.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful night. Good luck, Mr. Webster.
Thank you.
Hope it goes well. Thank you so much. You later.
Are we reserving our comments till the end, Mel? Mr. Webster?
You can reserve, you can...
Mr. Buckley, I've been getting comments for you for two years, but you can, you can, you can reserve your comments till the end. It's up to you. It's up to the chair. We have the middle school here, though. We have the middle school here, though. We need to get those
Yeah, we should get those on first, okay.
Speaking of which, I am going to go out of order and go on to the new business for the presentation of the Middle School faculty and students. Mrs. O'Connell and Mr. Maloney.
We have four mini presentations tonight, so we'll have four different groups of students come up. The first presentation, we may go out of order just a little bit, but the first one is Taylene Toby. She's going to come down and tell you about her experience as a Project 351 Ambassador. And actually, Bridget Gru is an alumni. Bridget was a Project 351 Ambassador four years ago. This is Taylene Toby. This microphone is for the NorCam, okay? Taylene's going to tell you about her experience back in January.
All right. Hi, my name's Taylene Toby. I'm a student at North Reading Middle School. I'm an eighth grader, and this year I was the ambassador for 2019 for Project 351. I'm wearing the shirt right now. It's a leadership program of sorts that takes one middle schooler, one eighth grader from each of the 351 towns and cities in the Commonwealth. And it brings them together throughout the year for just service and leadership programs and panels and things like that. And it's supposed to inspire you to get more involved in your community and service and things of the sort. So, this year, I was nominated by my teachers, and I got to go attend Launch Day on January 19th, 2019, down in Boston in Faneuil Hall. And I just got to meet so many people. We're organized into small groups so that we can go around the city and do service projects. I went to a service village. I got to make cards, blankets, care packages for veterans who attended. And then, we got to see panels from people who serve in their communities, and the governor and his wife. And this entire year, we're going to go and see just places that we can make a difference. So, on 9/11, we'll have a service. We'll have a reunion in May. And then, after that, we're allowed to go and volunteer again as alumni until we're adults. And now, between now and May, when we meet again, I get to organize a drive here at North Reading Middle School for Cradles to Crayons. So, it will kick off March 25th and run for about two weeks. And we're just looking for quality donations, clothes mostly, to help families need. So, hopefully, we can get your support on that.
Absolutely. I just have one question. When are you an adult?
I'm an eighth grader now, so maybe, I don't know, 10 years I'm eighteen.
Okay.
And also, like Bridget, Taylene is active in our theater, behind the scenes like Bridget. So they're little versions of each other. Thank you, Taylene. Our next presenter is Meredith Casey. She may be familiar to some of you, but she's going to come and tell you about some of the amazing work she's been doing as a community member, building awareness for head trauma. And also, she's going to tell you something pretty special that she wants to leave behind as a legacy to North Reading Middle School. Meredith Casey.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Meredith Casey, an eighth grader at the North Reading Middle School. I'm the founder of the Mighty Meredith Project, a nonprofit organization dedicated to kindness, giving back, and raising awareness to traumatic brain injuries. I would like to thank the North Reading Public Schools for providing me with the opportunity to be here this evening to share the information about the Mighty Meredith Project. The Mighty Meredith Project was officially launched in July 2017 after my medical team had inspired me to create my new normal, since my normal I had once known was no longer possible. In short, the mission of the Mighty Meredith Project is simple and has three points. Mighty Kind: We promote kindness, especially to those who are fighting a battle you know nothing about. It was the kindness from so many that got me through the darkest of days for so many months. Mighty Giving: We give back to the medical community where I continue to receive treatment. I was the beneficiary of donations from strangers each time I stepped into a treatment room or was hospitalized. Therefore, our giving focuses on giving back to hospitals where I have and continue to receive my medical care. Tufts Floating in Boston Children's. And finally, Mighty Smart: We bring education and awareness to traumatic brain injuries and the impacts of having a hidden disease, as well as fund education initiatives and TBI research. Our tagline, Be Kind, It's Good for the Mind, summarizes in one sentence what the Mighty Meredith Project is all about, and how just being kind can really impact your overall health, including your brain health, mental health, and the well-being of others. Kindness is a cure for so many things and has been my best medicine. This is why I would like to provide the North Reading Middle School with a kindness bench as a special thank you to the school and my peers for always being accepting of me and for never-ending kindness through my journey. As I close out my middle school years, I and the Mighty Meredith Project would like to leave the North Reading Middle School with a legacy of kindness for years to come. It is my hope you will allow this as a donation to the middle school. Thank you once again for your time this evening. I hope you can join my efforts in taking traumatic brain injuries head-on. And remember, there's always a time to be kind. Thank you.
Any questions for Meredith?
I just want to say your bravery and your kindness and what you've done to help not only others in this community, but people throughout the country. You've been involved with bringing Chris Nowitzki here, who was, that was incredibly important. I know there are people in this room who have experience with brain injury. I have a really good friend who started a group called The Knockout Project. And, you know, he is doing a lot of the same things that you're doing to help people. And I don't think people realize, they think a concussion is a concussion and then it goes away. And they think, oh, it has to happen 10 times for it to matter. And you're helping bring that understanding to those who suffer and those who live with those who suffer, I think is extremely important. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I would just say, when I first heard of the Mighty Meredith Project, I thought for sure it was run by like a professional organization. It is so well-done. I mean, you are so impressive. And, yeah, we have a lot of impressive things that, you know, come before us. And I just can't say enough. I mean, for an eighth grader, you are incredibly impressive. And so, just thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ken, how do you think that?
I would like to thank you. It takes more than bravery. It takes something from inside to want to step out and help other people. And I just hope you know how greatly, greatly it is appreciated.
Thank you. It's inspiring.
Yes.
For everything. Thank you.
If you haven't seen the cover of the Reddings, this quarter's cover is Mighty Meredith, so check it out. And I think I saw something in Boston Magazine.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's something in Boston Magazine, so she's our little mini-celebrity. So, way to go. We were going to work with Superintendent Bernard to find an appropriate place for the bench, but I'm really excited. Meredith has helped inspire me to rethink our core values, our current core values, our respect, responsibility, and community. And we're thinking about working with Meredith to add kindness in there, because it really kind of covers everything that we stand for. Great job. Thank you. Okay, so switching it up a little bit, I'm pleased to have Ms. O'Brien come down with her students from her art class to share with you some digital art that they've been working on with iPads.
It's going to be up on the screen.
It's going to be up there.
Come on, guys.
Oh, I forgot.
Okay.
Is that Cliff over there? Didn't see him.
He snuck in.
So I am very happy to present these four students. Why don't you folks just step right on over here so they can see your work? You want to hold up your picture that you did? These particular pieces of artwork, Piper's not here with us today. It's the artist who did this. These particular pieces of artwork were actually drawn on the computer itself, on the iPad. So, we took a traditional lesson for scratchboard, which is drawing with a sharp tool on a black piece of paper and just removing that surface to reveal the white. We actually did this instead using that design lesson. We actually did it on the iPad. And so, I had wanted the folks here to kind of explain or talk to you about your, their perception of the project. Because what I was trying to do is try to get some technology into the studio. But I'm old, and it's hard for me to get off the traditional materials. But, once you see some of the pieces that they did, I, just from the excitement that they brought to the project, you all can see. And we'll pass these around so you can take a look at those. But, from my perspective, I love seeing the students be so engaged with this particular tool. And it's just a different medium for us. It's not scratchboard, oh, sorry. It's not scratchboard. It's actually working on that particular iPad, which is a tool. But we could call it a medium, something that we're making art with, so they use their styluses and we're drawing on that. But I'll let them maybe, if you want to offer up some comments, something that you liked about the lesson or you'd love to see happen in the future, if you'd like to talk to our folks here about them or talk about your artwork.
Tell them your name and your grade level.
Yeah.
Oh, no, one of my
I'm Allison, grade seven.
I'm Madison, grade seven.
I'm Kristen, grade seven.
I'm Eric, grade seven.
So, I have a question. So are you all kind of artistically inclined anyway? Do you do a lot of drawing with, you know, paints and charcoal and crayons and pencils? Because if I, if someone gave me an iPad to do that, I would draw something and it would probably come out looking like a hairball or something. Like, these are really good. So, can you do more on this than if you're just doing kind of regular work?
I think kids who sometimes have trouble with the pencil and paper, they are easier to draw on the iPads and easier to use because we work with computers and technology every day. They find it just more interesting to use. And also, the app we use, we're able to use so many more, like, tools and different stencils that it allows us to be like creative in different ways.
And can you erase as you go along? And see, that's a big, I mean, you can erase when you're doing regular artwork, but then it smudges. It just doesn't, but, so that's a big advantage to, instead of having to draw 20, the same thing 20 times till you get it right, you can keep going back and recreating the original that you have and just make the details better. It's great.
And it's good that you brought that up because I think the students, they are more comfortable with it and they are able to work almost faster because their fingers and they're going back and forth between tools and the size of the line and the size of the brush stroke. It was amazing for me to watch because I don't work like that. I work in a more traditional sense. But I learned a lot from them, especially Eric. Probably not going to say much, but especially Eric because he brought a lot of his own background knowledge to class. And he was helping the other kids because they thought that he was doing what was cool. Are you more of an marksman right now? He does a little bit more abstract kind of stuff, which is not quite the opposite. You might want to show that.
I did three while I was listening to the talking.
Go ahead and show.
The first one is this one.
I noticed that one of the pictures was black and white, and then you had it changed color.
Oh, wow, that's cool.
He had done it in color, but he didn't like the reflection, so if Eric's unhappy, no one's happy. We did it in black and white.
And then I had another one. This one.
Oh, wow.
Can you show it to everybody?
Yeah. Now, you at the end, you had one that was kind of like a yellow. What was that? Was that the same owl, but it was yellow or?
Yeah, the one with the yellow eyes.
Oh, this one right here, okay. That's cool.
I like how you put the brown tones in it as well.
And had you worked, have you worked with this before you did it in school? Had you used this before, any of you? You probably have, right? Yeah.
Do you do it in one sitting? Like, does it, one class, or does it take longer?
I think we took two or three, maybe?
It was two or three. But we definitely need to take that into, upon reflection, I should say. Upon reflection, there was a number of different things that I need to work on so that it's a more enriching experience for them. And I think one of the things was to actually allow a little bit more time to work on it because we're piloting it. And now, now is when I'm going to start actually keeping it definitely a part of the studio environment because they really love it. Aren't you excited? Want to get everyone? And then it took us days to get the, weeks to get the right program loaded on so that they could actually use this. Because I'm told this is a great program because of the response time. When you put the stylus to the, to the screen, there's almost an immediacy there that if there's a lag, it's problematic. So, just for grins, do you have that one that you started? Let's let Mr. Webster try it. Go on over there.
Oh, no. This is not fair. What do you want me to?
No, it is fair. We're going to let you give it a go.
So, no, wait, what are you, just touch with that?
Show them what to do. You got to try it.
Oh, 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 wait a minute.
Ryan, what is the app that you guys are using?
Oh, that's
This is Last Desk Sketchbook.
Oh, yeah.
And the technology folks here had to put it
So then if I wanted to
on the iPad, but I thought that it was
Do something crazy. Oh, that's pretty cool.
A really good program and that you can do so many different things. You can toggle between a pencil
Oh, the width, the thickness of the brush or that, yeah.
And then they have the opportunity for choice. So they can choose if they want to be adding color and with what particular instrument do they want to be doing that with. So this, I like the choice that's afforded to them so that they can kind of create and have fun and explore. But I'm still learning myself because I am major new when it comes to working with these. But they're helping me along, so. Wasn't that fun?
Yes, it was great. And it actually makes me think I could maybe even draw something once in my life. But as a traditionalist, obviously, you've always worked with real things, right? Paper.
Yeah.
Just what do you think about this? Because I think it's great, but I think we also need them to continue to work with the traditional methods, correct?
They do.
They do.
They need to have that background knowledge so that they can take that. And I think in North Reading, I think we do an excellent job with that with the elementaries, providing that foundation, and then they come up to me. But they definitely need to have a design background so that they can kind of go off in their own direction. This middle school into high school, they're starting to feel out who they are and what they want to work with. Do they want to be more of a painter? Do they want to draw? Do they want to sculpt? Do they want to create ceramics? Do they want to be working on an iPad, drawing and designing that one?
And do we have like, so say they wanted to do this and then, you know, print it up in a high-quality print. The program allows that to be done? It would connect to high-quality printers and all that kind of stuff?
Yes. Yeah, so they can actually print out something. So those were printed out earlier to put into the frame
Right.
to show, but yes, that is
Like, can it print on a canvas or?
That's a good question. We have to go talk to Al over at
Oh.
Do you guys mind turning around, face the camera and show them your work?
Go ahead and show your artwork.
Mr. Bernard, you had a
As the students showed off their work, just
Yes.
Go ahead, guys.
Mr. Webster's comment about kind of the traditional elements of art. The next time you're down in the area of my office, you're going to see some artwork that the eighth grade produced
Oh, great.
that Ms. O'Brien has put in the frames, leaving the kind of the common area. And they're very impressive. So to see what seventh graders are doing here and how that carries forward to grade A is pretty extraordinary.
Excellent.
I think you'll be very impressed with not only what you saw tonight, but when you see the more traditional elements of color and the pencil. Am I correct?
It's actually a mixed media project, so it's watercolor pencil, then regular colored pencil, and a little bit of paint on top of that so that you can get that wider range of value.
They're very, very nice pieces of art. Eight or 10 of them in the central office.
Great.
Thank you very much. Ms. O'Brien, I just want to comment, you are a phenomenal teacher. I don't know how you do it, but you could take Mel Webster and
You actually made, my son actually liked art for a year when he had, yes.
I'm glad to hear that.
And he would produce an incredible work of art. You are very, very talented in bringing out their strengths.
Thank you very much.
A talented artist in her own right.
Yes, very talented artist.
Lushy. I told you they were nice people.
You guys are doing nice work.
Yeah, it's great.
Well, thank you.
Great job, that's awesome.
Thank you for presenting today. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go grab those.
I'll take the microphone.
Just taking them all.
Thank you very much.
Those are awesome.
Okay, our last student presentation tonight are two seventh-grade students who are competing in the Science Olympiad this Saturday, representing North Reading Middle School. Ryan Shula and Eli Hunt are going to come down. And Ms. Bowers could not be here tonight. Her father, who many of you know as a former school committee member, Cliff Bowers, is here. He helps Ms. Bowers out with Science Olympiad. So he is coming to help the boys tell you about their big competition that's happening on Saturday at Endicott. No, Assumption. I think it's at Assumption College on Saturday.
Boys, does it help you to be by the table? Is that to talk?
Do you want to put it over here?
Put it over here.
Yeah, why don't you come over here? Over this way, Bill. Why doesn't one of you sit here?
Yeah, there you go.
You can use that. I'll take the microphone out of the stand and you can hold it and talk, all right? How's that? Just Webster's talking, he needs to use that, okay?
Hi, my name is Ryan Shula.
No, it's on. It's just for the cable. We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, my name is Ryan Shula. And my, so, I'm in Science Olympiad. And we are a state, we go to a statewide competition. And we all, there's a bunch of different events you can do. And currently, I have so my current events are, so Disease Detectives, where we learn about different diseases, Herpetology, Study of Amphibians and Reptiles, Water Quality, where I learn about things like the nitrogen cycle and other things like that. Write It, Do It, where one, he's going to write it down and I'm going to have to create it. It's going to be like a structure or something. You don't know till the day of. And then also, a balsa wood glider, which I don't have with me right now. I think it's still in the classroom. And, and Battery Buggy, which is right here. Eli, do you want to say your events?
Oh, yes. This year, this is my first year doing Science Olympiad. And I'm doing Meteorology, Heredity, Game On, Write It, Do It with Ryan, a roller coaster, and fossils.
How do you do all those different things?
Oh, meteorology is I have to learn about different weather cycles and patterns and do a test on it. And with Heredity, I have to learn about genes and how chances of heredity. There's a test on that. Game on is, um, game on is an event where I'm actually going to have to make a game when I get there. They'll give us a subject and I have to make a game on a programming software called Scratch.
Wow.
Um, then I made a roller coaster out of, um, household materials like wood and old tubes. And once I've made it, uh, I get to go do the competition and I'll have to customize it to let a marble stay on the track for a certain amount of time I'll be given then.
And you have to do the same thing for all your categories, right?
Yeah.
Tell them it's a, it's an all-day competition.
Oh yeah, all day. So it, I think we're supposed to be there around 6:45 and we are there till about 5 o'clock. So it's, it's a full day, but it's like.
How do you practice for the write it, do it? Do you have scenarios that you practice?
Um, yeah, that's how, that's how we're doing it. But with, with so many events, we, we, some of them we got speed through because we, we got a small group this year, about five kids, so.
So you're all doing a lot of events?
Yeah. We're down to half as many as we had last year, so.
Do you, do you, do you compete as a team?
Yeah. Well.
Some events are individual.
Yeah. Like, mo, mo, we have, we have so little, we have so little amount of kids this year that we're kind of going individual in most events, but write it, do it is mandatory to have two.
I'm pretty confident though with you two guys going. I think we're, I think we're in good shape. So what's this thing?
So this is a battery buggy that, that me and him are working on. And basically, um, the, so basically, um, each, I can set it up for you, but basically you, you wind, basically you wind it up to.
The microphone.
To a certain distance. I'm not actually going to turn it on because that would just be. But yeah, but you wind it up to like a certain distance. I'm just going to do it to the shortest distance that's needed, but. It's about right. Good practice for fishing. Okay, yeah, so here, so you, you, you put the, so we, we have it marked with string and the half meters are marked with white string and the full meters are marked with colored string. So this is the first meter, nine meters. It's blue string. And when, so I have to aim it using this, kind of like a little scope.
Watch out for the floor.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to turn it on. I'm not going. So then I, then at the competition, I have to get like a little marker after it's aimed. And this will be about straight forward. And I'd push it down. And so it would keep going until it runs out of string. But when it runs out of string, it will pull and fall off this conductor, so it will stop moving altogether. And so this motor can't handle all eight batteries. So we have these little fake batteries that trick it into thinking there actually is a battery in there.
To make the connection.
Ryan, on the day of the competition, will they tell you how far they want you to have it go?
Yeah. So I will, so I will have to, based on the nearest half meter, I'm going to have to approximate around where it should be.
So that you said like the ni, you had it set for nine meters, so it should go.
Yeah.
Nine meters is what, and then they measure it and see how close you were or does it, are you supposed to hit something or?
Um, I'm just supposed to be on right on the point they want me to get to.
Okay.
Very interesting.
They tell them between nine and 12 meters, some distance within 10 meter, 10 centimeters.
Right.
Of the, uh, so he has to set that so that it will stop at that point. And when it runs out of string, of course, the, uh, it, the front wheels don't go anymore, so it's a brake.
Oh, okay.
And it also disconnects the power, so it doesn't power it anymore.
Well, you have a very good mentoring coach there in Mr. Bowers.
Yeah.
Certainly knows what he's doing.
Yeah, oh, definitely.
And he won't start it, but, but I will.
Off the table? Oh, I see.
Oh, I see, so then.
So it comes and breaks, yeah.
Yeah. That's pretty good.
So do you take things apart at home all the time?
Um, I used, I did sometimes, but then my mom got mad.
Yeah.
Like, like that time I tried to add on to that robot kit I had.
I wanted to take you to make that.
Um, it's, it took us a few, it took us a few months to get everything down.
Yeah.
You've been meeting monthly, I mean, uh, weekly.
Um, twice a week, actually.
Twice a week for the last several months.
Yeah.
It's a big time.
A lot of hard work.
In what grade? You both in the seventh grade?
Yes.
Did you design it?
Um, yeah, we, we worked on, we worked on designing it, yeah.
Pretty good.
Pretty good is right, yeah.
There you go.
That's awesome.
We had the choice, we would have brought a lot more here.
Well, we had the choice. I would, we had the choice, I would have a thing that measures solidity in a, in a plane here, so.
And when, when's the contest again?
Um, the contest is Saturday.
This Saturday.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
And we'll let you know how they do.
Excellent.
Yes.
Great job.
Great job, guys.
Very nice, thank you.
Very good.
Thanks, Cliff.
Nice job.
Thank you, Karen.
That was excellent.
That concludes the student portion of our presentation. We do have one more thing on the agenda. Is it okay to do that now?
Yeah.
Is that okay? We just have our annual request for the Washington DC trip. But before we do that, I think I can speak for Michael and I that we just want to also echo what others have said tonight. Mel, this is my eighth year as the middle school principal and you have been on the school committee for a lot longer than that. So I would like to thank you for your support for this beautiful new building. I did attend many of those late meetings, but I would like to, to thank you for allowing me to dream. I think that's a job as a principal to dream what could it look like? What might it look like? If, if, sometimes that's a dollar sign, sometimes it's a lot more than a dollar sign. And for the most part, what I have asked for, we have been given. And to see the students come and show their technology use and to see them just, you know, embrace this new building and the 21st learning opportunities that they are allowed. I just really personally wanted to thank you. And I, and I'm sure that Michael will as well, but thank you very much.
Well, actually, I, I made a mistake. I should have said the best move we ever had was making sure that Kathy O'Connell was maybe principal of the middle school. And Patrick Daly.
Patrick's still here.
Every, every, I'll, I'll be, right. By the end of the night, I'll have said everybody was the best move we made.
Thank you, Mel. Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you've done, Kathy. Thanks.
You can tell me now, Mel. I'll, I'll.
The best assistant principal we've ever hired. Mike Maloney.
Thank you.
The best assistant principal the middle school has.
Yes.
Presently. Um, but I do, I do echo Kathy's sentiments and just want to thank you for all your support. Personally, for me, over the last 10, 11 years I've been in the district now. But so thank you and best of luck.
Thanks.
On your move. Just real quick, two parts to this. One is just to give you all an update on the 2019 Washington DC trip that you approved last year right around this time. Currently, we have 178 students signed up to go to Washington, starting on June 10th this year. Highlights of the trip, um, obviously the memorials, the museums, the monuments. My personal favorite is Mount Vernon. I just, since we started to go with World Strides, that's been a part of the trip. And it's just really, um, a, a nice place to, to bring the kids to see. We're going to a Cubs National Stadium this year. The Red Sox are not in town, unfortunately. So that's another highlight. The Cherry Blossom Boat Tour, which we haven't been able to do the last couple of years because it's been fully booked. So that's the, the paddle wheel boat as compared to the, like the Spirit of Boston type ship that we've been on the last couple of years. And that's just something with World Strides too is if we see something that we don't like or is missing, we just make the request and they do their best to, to accommodate us. So we're looking forward to going to the trip in June. Just finalizing some chaperones. We sent the roommate forms out last week, so that's some work Mrs. Jones and Guidance and Ms. O'Connell and I need to do before we go on the trip. But, you know, kids are excited, we're excited.
I'm not busy.
Is that on tape? I DVR'd this at home, so I'm going to. You're always welcome. So that's this year. But for 2020, I know it's early to, to start planning this, but when we switch to World Strides, their process is, it's a longer process than what we used to, or what we experienced before. And the first year we went with World Strides, we were late into the game in their process. We didn't get the appro, we didn't start promoting the trip until October. And their scholarship money, it's, it's a big pool of money. And as it gets closer to the trip date, that, that money shrinks. They really wanted us to start the process the year before. So it would be for our current seventh graders for their eighth grade trip. Has a lot of benefits. It spreads the payments out over, you know, a good 12 months if, if parents do sign up in June. So it's, it's a, it's not a big of a hit as it would be closer to the trip. There's also an, an early registration discount, which is if you see on the, the one-page document you, you have in front of you that if parents do sign up prior to June 10th, the trip price will be the same as it is this year. It's, it's $949 next year. And if they're late registering, it's, it will be $1,025, um, $1,024 I should say for 2020. And again, it would be a similar itinerary. We would, you know, do the, the requisite monuments, museums, memorials, our International Cemetery, plus some of the funerary things, you know, the King's Dominion trip, the, the dinner, the dinner cruise, the ballgame. Just to note too, with the eighth grade social studies frameworks changing next year to more of a civics focus, the trip will be a little bit more, I think the students will be a little bit more prepared for the trip. And then we can tweak some of our, our spots that we go visit. The National Archives, I believe is where the Constitution is, I think. You know, we would fit that in there so the kids would be more aligned to, to what they're learning in, in eighth grade social studies. So we're just here to ask permission that we can start to promote the trip, the 2020 trip. We'll have a meeting with parents, seventh grade parents. I believe we have it tentatively scheduled with your approval, May 2nd, which would piggyback with our fifth grade parent information night. And that's what we had done last year and we found it to be successful.
I remember when my oldest daughter went through it and I was a, a chaperone, so it's a lovely trip. It's, it's, I would love to go on it again if it was possible. And I would probably do it when all my kids are out of school and not paying tuitions. But I, I think this is very, very good for the eighth grades and I would like to see that it continues. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I also have chaperoned for this trip and, and I, I can see some really nice improvements on, on that with the current company. Uh, it really looks like a, a, a nice, a nice itinerary. It's, it's so much better run than it, than it was in the past, that the caliber of hotel that we stay in, the, the transportation is better. The, um.
The safety precautions.
The safety. You know, we did actually have to use the, um, the on-call doctor last year to get a, a prescription for, for a student. So, and it was just, and they delivered that right, right to the bus. So it's, it's really, when we're there, it's, it's about the kids and making sure that the kids are, are safe and chaperoned. We don't have to worry about any of those other details. I mean, I can think of a couple of different, uh, things where some of that stuff might have come in handy even on the trip I was on, so. Yeah, I know, it's, uh, that's, those are nice, some nice changes.
And I think it's really good that they're starting out a year early because it is a hit to the pocketbook.
I agree.
So you can, you know, cut it down.
Advanced planning.
For, yeah, I think that's very good.
So two, two questions. So you said 178 are going this year out of how many?
200.
198.
Okay. And what's the, what's the alternative program? Is there programs at the school otherwise?
There is. So we run, um, a week of local trips. We, we call them day trips. And it mirrors, you know, what we're doing down in DC. So, um, we go into the, um, the Constitution and Bunker Hill one day. There's a tour of Fenway Park one day, um, Canterbury Lake, Franklin Park Zoo. And that changes every year. Duck tour has been on that list in the past.
Okay.
I try to tell the kids every year that I was a stay-at-home, I'm still a stay-at-home choice person. So that's a great option for kids. We try not to say you have to go to DC. We tell them that you have some options at the end and you should listen and then go home and make the best decision for you and your family. And that going on the day trips is, is a great, great option. So we usually have a dozen or so, 15 or so kids who are taking the day trips.
And then we do support students who choose to come to school as normal. You know, it's, obviously it looks a lot different than the normal, you know, eighth grade, uh, school day, but also that option.
And you, and you mentioned the scholarship. There's more scholarship money if you start earlier. I mean, I know, I know we've talked about it before, but can you just talk a little bit about scholarships?
So the first was kind of two levels of, of that scholarship money. The first is always through World Strides. So they have an application that parents go online, they fill out and they, you know, process that and give them X amount of money. I'm really not privy to that information, but they do, you know, many of our parents do get some money. And then we tell parents throughout, um, you know, if it's ever a financial thing, it's a, it's a conversation with Kathy or I to, to talk about how we can get, if they really want to go, how we can get their student down to, um, down to Washington on the trip. And I have to say, part of our packet that we give to the kids when we have that meeting is a, is a donation, um, letter. If any families are able and willing to, to donate to help support someone else's trip. And our families are very generous when, when it comes to that. So we do have some scholarship money that we can, can help with. Do we do a, um, do you broadcast that out to the community or just to the people who are, look interested in the trip? The donation part?
Just to our local eighth grade families. So you'll, you'll see that come in as an acceptance to the school committee prior to the trip. And it's usually anywhere between $1,500 and $2,000. Just people give $20 here or $20 there. But also, uh, we should mention our school Parents Association is very generous and helps with scholarships.
I just wonder if there's an opportunity to send, to, um, inform the community about that to see if there's any other folks who might like to donate on any time. I don't know. Something to think about.
Right.
I might like to, for instance.
If you don't know about it.
Yeah, but if you don't know about, yeah. Or, or don't remember.
Right.
And anyone on the school committees, well, the chaperone, it ends.
Starting tomorrow.
It's a long, it's a long bus ride. Yes. But it is well worth it. Uh, it, it's a lot of fun. I, I did it when my son was in eighth grade. I think he was on my bus, but otherwise I did not have much to do with him. So you, you can be sure you're, uh, if you are, if someone is chaperoning with their child, it doesn't have to be that, the child can be rest assured that they don't have to see the parent very much, so.
Give me a couple more years and I'll be up there with my grandparent.
No, that, you'll be there, I'm sure. You'll be doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, we do.
Yes.
All right. I will entertain a motion to, uh, to, um, the word I'm looking for.
Approve, approve.
Approved, thank you. The, uh, Washington DC eighth grade trip.
I moved that we approve the 2020 North Reading Middle School eighth grade Washington DC trip. Second.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
You guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Madam Chairman, do you want to do the budget, the policies first or Mr. Connolly's presentation? Whichever you prefer.
Well, let's do the presentation because assuming there's some people in the audience that still want to know what the budget is. So, uh, Mr. Connolly.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, there's copies of the presentation in the front row there. Feel free to help yourself. All right, so that is this. So...
Sorry, dang it, yeah. I wish you'd give it a little step, you might be more comfortable.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so I'm going to try to move through the presentation relatively quickly. I know many of you have a budget book for a few weeks now. So, I'm going to try to talk a little bit about the challenges that we face, some of our budget priorities, the budget drivers that drive the budget each year, and then I'll kind of get into the numbers and the new positions that we're recommending, and talk a little bit about budget offsets and so forth that's included in the budget. So, you know, first and foremost, I kind of present this slide each year. Many of these challenges don't change from year to year. They sort of illustrate sort of the structural challenge with trying to fund a school or a town budget. You know, the revenue sources that are coming into the community are relatively flat. We certainly receive state aid through the governor's unrestricted, you know, locally and in Chapter 78, but those, for North Reading, that we haven't seen significant increases in those areas on an annual basis, so those areas of revenue are relatively flat. We sort of have an area of constrained local revenue, as us, like many other communities, obviously every community in Massachusetts, were restricted to the proposition two and a half, and we can only raise, you know, local property taxes by so much on an ongoing basis. And the reality is that our fixed costs, in most cases, health insurance, county retirement, in, you know, in most cases, really do grow at a much faster rate on an annual basis than that is of our annual revenue. So, that prevents, that presents a structural challenge each year when trying to fund a school or a municipal budget. The school department has a variety of other revenue offsets that we have come to rely on to make the budget work, and those are the funds that we receive from our revolving funds and our tuition-based programs. So, we, as you know, charge, assess user fees and tuition payments for many of the optional programs. We also receive a variety of federal and state grants. So, this revenue comes in, it may help us kind of make the budget is what it is and make everything kind of come together. We're limited in what we can kind of raise from this additional revenue, but it is a big, big part, you know, piece of the pie in terms of, this particular FY20 budget that we're recommending, that amount is a little over $2.9 million. Then we have our contractual obligations, so just like every, you know, school district across the state of Massachusetts, the majority of our budget is made up of salaries. So, we have a variety of collective bargaining agreements that we work with, and just to fund, in most cases, modest salary increases, cost of living adjustments for, to meet our contractual salary obligations. We're already looking at about, you know, two and a half percent out of what our recommended budget request is this evening, which is 4.3%. So, that's kind of a typical number when trying to fund contractual salary obligations because of this, may, you know, we have a lot of staff doing a variety of different, you know, things to make the school budget work and the school tick, by 82.7%, which is a very typical stat when funding a school budget. The revenue sources of a school budget, local property taxes make up the largest piece of the pie at 71.4%. That is pretty common statistic, and these stats, percentage breakdowns, really have not changed significantly over the last number of years. State aid has been pretty flat at about 13%. You know, local receipts, which are various other revenue sources that flow into the town, licenses, permits, fees, vehicle excise taxes and so forth, make up about 9.6%. And then the fees, from the user fees and the tuitions, and the federal and state grants for the school department help make up the other piece of the pie of the revenue and the funding sources of a school budget. These are our budget priorities, as you are aware, and the school committee sets budget goals each year in the fall. These are kind of the five main ones. We obviously always try to strive to maintain the adequate student-teacher ratios and guidelines of the school committee. We are, the NRPS 2021 document is our, the Educational Strategic Plan. We are attempting to implement year four of that plan in the 2019 school year. So, that really is a very much of a working document that really is the new initiatives, the new enhancements, the new positions that we're trying to achieve, and that's always a big priority, maintaining school facilities, maintaining and restoring school and department operating budgets at the school levels, and then continuing to collaborate and work very closely with town officials through close collaboration with the finance planning team. So, the budget drivers, we have four main budget drivers this year, and I will say these have not changed significantly over the last few years. I just talked a little bit about contractual salary obligations and the fact that salaries represent over 82.7% of our total budget requests. Again, that's pretty typical, but to sort of to fund these cost-of-living adjustments, you know, we certainly, you know, makes up a big piece of the budget each year, so it's always a major budget driver. Year four of NRPS 2021, we are attempting to fund 1.5 FTE positions, which totals a little over $106,000. I'll get into a little bit more detail about what these positions are, but they essentially focus on the teaching and learning strategy area, and we will hear more about these a little bit later in the presentation. Our operational costs have been growing over the last number of years. We have seen that, the need to increase building maintenance lines, building, you know, our grounds maintenance lines, our busing, transportation lines, and our utility lines. These are, a lot of the cases, these are fixed costs. These are increases that move with, you know, inflationary, you know, increases from year to year, contractual increases that we need to adjust the budget for on an ongoing basis. So, that is a big piece of the pie this year. And then our special education out of district costs, you know, North Reading is certainly not alone when putting together a budget from year to year, and special education out of district costs for those students being educated, you know, outside of the district, there's tuitions and transportation costs that go along with that, and that is also a driver of this school department FY20 budget requests. The district anticipates an actual, actually a decrease in the number of students requiring our district placements in fiscal year 2020, but like it was the case, if you may recall, in fiscal year 19, that line item because of, in order for us to meet the needs of these students, in most cases, some students are transferring to maybe more costly placements and for us to adequately meet their needs, it is requiring an increase, and it is a big part of our budget requests. But the FY20 budget assumes that we will have 32 students outside placements, and the FY19 budget assumed 37 students. So, if you look at the actual, the numbers, the FY20 budget requests, we're asking for a little over $32 million, $32,83,320. That's a little bit more than a $1.3 million increase, which is a 4.3% increase over fiscal year 2019. So, you know, we've tried to take a look at what we need to do to meet our obligations and so forth, as well as to move the district forward by looking at some key positions, both operationally, both driven by enrollment, and both driven by our strategic plan. So, if you look at the salary number, which is again the largest piece of the pie, a little over $26.5 million to fund our contractual salary obligations, as well as to fund some new positions that I'm going to get into in a moment on the next slide, but that increase over FY19 is 3.7%. The next largest increase is the operations and maintenance piece, so I'm going to get, I'm going to show you a few charts in a moment that just shows you some of the challenges or some of the things that we've had to do in order to upkeep and adequately protect the investment of this building, certainly in the middle school and the high school, and to fund some increases operationally, both utilities and building maintenance and grounds and landscaping needs, and the wastewater treatment facility that helps operate this facility, we've had to increase, and that's certainly, you know, driving that line item up, that cost category.
Mike, one quick question?
Yes.
For the, for the potential staffing operations, is that in salaries, or is that in operations and maintenance?
The staffing is all in salaries.
Okay.
So, the new positions that are being proposed are reflected in the salary line item. The operations and maintenance, that's more the buildings and grounds areas, the utilities, the busing in some cases. In the tuitions, as you can see, I just spoke to the need for us to increase that line item. We're also, we received kind of some one-time funds this year through the extraordinary relief program, through the circuit breaker program with the state. So, it's that additional funding that we received this year is being used this year. We won't have the use of all those funds that we got kind of one-time this year, so we've had to adjust that line item for that, as well as to adjust some of the increased costs from students moving to adequately estimate their and service their needs into some more costly placements. So, we are at about 4.3% is our recommended request. Looking at the piece of the pie, again, as I referenced earlier, 82.7% represents salaries. The next largest piece of that pie is the tuition cost at 6.8%. You know, operations and maintenance is around 5.9%. I put together this pie chart each year, and these really have not changed significantly. I think, you know, from year to year, we might see operations and maintenance may increasing slightly, being a little bit larger piece of the pie, and tuition slightly going up, but overall, these are pretty similar breakdown of percentages of what makes up the school department, you know, budget request for FY20. So, I talked a little bit about some of this as being a budget driver, and in a lot of cases, it's been a challenge, but this graph illustrates the increase in building operational costs the district has experienced really over the past five to six years to account for, in large part, new operational costs of this campus, as well as across the four, the four campuses. You know, we feel that it's been a priority, and we feel it's critical to take the proper preventative maintenance measures that are in place to protect and upkeep our facilities. It's been a budget goal, but there's certainly been some financial challenges in us doing so. So, funds allocated to maintain buildings have increased significantly since fiscal year 2014, as shown in this graph. So, we've had to kind of reallocate or find the funding sources each year as we've kind of moved through these last four or five years to put certainly in this area.
Michael, what are the, what's the biggest change in addition to this bill? Is it mainly this building, or are there some specific areas of cost?
Yeah, so the biggest change, it's a great question. We've seen the biggest need be, certainly, a lot of it's driven by this building. This building is significant, you know, the campus and the, especially the equipment alone that is on this building. I think we have about 20 rooftop units, HVAC rooftop units. So, it's really around the heating and cooling, the HVAC, the energy management, the lighting to adequately maintain and service and operate predominantly this building is a big piece of that pie. Certainly, the wastewater treatment facility was new to us. We have, we didn't have that prior to opening up this beautiful state-of-the-art campus.
That's like a quarter of a million dollars, right?
So, that's almost $200,000 alone. So, this, this increase, that's, and that was new in fiscal 15, so a big part of this was operating the wastewater treatment facility, as well as putting together for the first time really adequate preventative maintenance contractors we felt we needed to do to upkeep the, really the highly technical equipment that comes with operating this campus. So, you're seeing that a lot as part of this increase. Certainly, you know, plumbing, plumbing needs is a big part of this as well. It's really those areas is what's driven this increase. I think we're getting pretty close to it leveling out. You know, we don't see a big increase as much from FY19 and '20 as you maybe did in prior years, but we're still seeing a need to allocate the adequate resources here to protect the investment. Utilities is the same, same way, so this is electricity, gas, and water. You know, back in, you know, at fiscal 14, we were back, we were down just under $600,000. Electricity rates, you know, don't go down from year to year. We see three and a half, four percent increases. We've done a really good job in regulating and modulating our boilers and our occupancy schedules to save on energy, but certainly the rates go up from year to year, and to just provide the adequate electricity for our five schools and four campuses, there's certainly a cost to that. So, you've kind of seen an upward trend there as well, certainly in these, in these areas. So, talking about enrollment, enrollment's always a little bit, always a driver of the school budget, it was always something we pay very, very close attention to. Enrollment over the last, you know, five years has been kind of on a moderate decline. We expect that decline to kind of level off over the next five years, and we don't expect enrollment to change significantly, district-wide enrollment, that is. The biggest change over the next, in the nearest future of the next, you know, three years or so will be at the high school level. So, what you're really seeing is kind of a, you know, higher class sizes are getting to graduate, and the smaller class sizes at the middle school are working their way onto the high school. So, the high school may experience about, you know, 75 students, a decline of about 75 students over the next three years, although next year enrollment's going to stay just about the same at almost every level, a little bit of an increase at the elementary level, but overall, we're not going to see a significant change.
So, we won't, this year we had like a 60-student drop at the high school, which is an anomaly. We won't.
We won't see that this year. So, we're going to stay at about 750 or so at the high school. We're going to be leveling off around, you know, 550 or so over time at the middle school. And then the elementary level, we are seeing an increase of students desiring full-day kindergarten, and that's having an impact on the budget, which I'll speak to momentarily, but, you know, we're seeing the elementary level increase slightly, but nothing, nothing significantly that we're expecting right now. That, you know, that obviously could change if you look at this on a year-to-year basis. So, there's not a lot of enrollment changes that are driving needs with the school budget or additional staffing, you know, at this time, but we'll continue to look at that. So, when we look at what's included in our FY20 budget, this is really the key slide that we are recommending an increase of 5.5 positions. The first two, we would consider this a level services increase in order to meet the demand of the, certainly, families desiring full-day kindergarten. We knew we were going to see an increase in fiscal '20 of full-day kindergarten families. We had kind of a drop in kindergarten enrollment this year due to birth rates five or six years earlier. We knew that was going to change based on the census data and everything that we were looking at, and that certainly, we did the registration process in February, and we definitely see the need to add a section in kindergarten, which comes with a full-day kindergarten teacher and full-day kindergarten paraprofessional. And it's been a priority of both the school committee and the administration and the school district to certainly provide full-day kindergarten for all families that are seeking such. So, this would allow us to do that. The next two kind of green, italicized positions, those were the 1.5 FTE positions I spoke of earlier, that again are driven by NRPS 2021, our strategic plan. So, there are a lot more positions, which I'll get to in a moment, but the administration felt these 1.5 FTEs were the priority. The first 1.5 FTE is an academic teacher at the middle school. This would focus on foreign language and STEM. It's been a longstanding goal to improve and expand the foreign language program at the middle school, as well as continue to provide additional STEM, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, curricular programs at this level. This small, modest increase would allow us to certainly achieve that, start to achieve that. The academic teacher, it's at the high school level mainly, would certainly help us to expand on our technology and STEM, you know, curricular areas, and also help us, you know, bring some of the core programs and academic programs, as well as the advanced placement courses in these areas, more into the optimum class size area. I've shown slides in the past where you see many of these core programs in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, even despite the decline in enrollment we experienced this year, have class sizes really higher than optimum level, higher than 24, 25 students. So, this helps us achieve, achieve that area, as well as expand on video technology and other emerging STEAM program areas. The bottom two are really in the operational area. We certainly are seeing a need to add to our custodial staff to maintain proper square footage, you know, cleaning areas, and we also are seeing that there could be some efficiencies gained by having a floater custodian that would work across all the district. The salary there is, or the cost there is offset by an estimated savings in overtime. This would be a position that would work sort of a split shift and allow us to maintain efficiency and maintain, you know, us getting the job done and continuing to keep the areas that need to be cleaned adequately when we may not be, have a full complement of staff. So, we've seen this be a really kind of effective measure to address, address that area. This final position is a facilities engineer. It's been talked about in the past, I think it was on the list at times last year. We are certainly seeing a need to maximize efficiencies within the building and grounds department, while certainly enhancing the ability for the district to experience a savings by reducing outside contractor work, while leveraging opportunities to further reduce energy consumption. This position would achieve all those types of objectives. We think there is, and this position, we would come with a salary of about $85,000. We do, we have reduced the contractual side on the expense side of the equation based on having, you know, this position at our disposable, and we feel it's something that could grow over time, and it could even result in either further savings over time.
Can you talk a little bit more...
Can you talk a little bit more about that, Michael?
Yeah, so, you know, having, you know, a facilities engineer, you know, right now we have a lot of service contracts with HVAC companies, heating and cooling companies, with the energy management companies, with a lighting control, you know, company. We're working on initiatives all the time about LEDD lighting and how to really bring it, greater energy consumption savings and measures. So having someone with those types of expertise at our disposable on staff, we feel like we could reduce some of the service visits, some of the on-call needs, whether they be emergency needs that arise or just the standard preventative maintenance type visits that we have contractually reached out to on, in those main areas to start. And we feel once the, you know, the person is kind of transitioned into the district, they could sort of expand their areas of expertise to potentially wastewater treatment, you know, operations. And we could further start to reduce some of these contractual services. So we've kind of conservatively estimated about $20,000 of savings and reduce some of those line items. Instead of having a monthly visit by our energy management consultant, we think we could have a bimonthly visit. Instead of having quarterly visits from our heating and cooling company to help maintain the equipment, we feel like we could have semi-annually visits initially and those types of measures could be taken.
And to clarify, those were all already included in the line items for that? So that if this position didn't get approved, those numbers would go up a little bit?
Correct. Yeah, we have to have an adjustment on the other end, on the expense end.
I would never say that, you know, operations positions are as important as educational positions, but they're really close. And I think in this case, these two are 100% required. The facilities engineer, given the complexity of this campus, is, it's been required really since the school opened and we've kind of gotten along and our people have gotten up to speed as much as they can. But as Michael said, we're spending a lot of money outside the district with consultants. The floater custodian, 100% needed. We're not even, we're not even close to the state average in terms of square footage per custodian staff. We're way higher than we should be and eventually the buildings will suffer if we don't, if we don't add that custodian position.
Great, thank you. So to kind of summarize where we're at with the numbers, again, the request that's before you this evening is a little over $32 million. That is a 4.3% increase over fiscal '19. I'll show a chart a little bit later in the presentation that gives you some context of how that compares to prior years. But again, that really doesn't tell the full story. That's what we're asking the town to appropriate out of their operating budget, out of their general fund. As I showed you earlier, we do rely on additional revenue, additional budget subsidies through federal and straight grants that we receive to help offset a variety of line items in the budget through special education, through professional development, through teacher mentorship programs, and then the revolving funds, which are the funds, revenue that we assess user fees for, athletics, transportation, extracurricular programs, tuition-based programs like the full-day kindergarten preschool. They help make, you know, tell the full story. So we're really looking at almost, you know, a little under $35 million of a school budget, school expenses. And that doesn't tell the full story because as you know, the school committee accepts a variety of donations annually, almost at every meeting each month, and those can, you know, average about $250,000 a year. That helps fund additional instructional equipment, additional athletic equipment, a variety of items that help, you know, find their way into the classroom and help make the educational experience what it is for the North Reading students. And then the PTOs do a variety of other in-kind activities, help fund class field trips, enrichment activities, bring in speakers, bring in classroom supplies for the teachers to really make, you know, the entire experience and to tell the full story. And there, those five PTO annual budgets are about $75,000 in total. So here's where we stand. Again, the request is 32 million, 83,000, 320, but the full picture, when you add in the other revenue sources, is just under $35 million. When we put together the budget, just really quickly, we do, we do kind of start with three proposals that we work from. We start with kind of level services and that is kind of everything that we have today with adjustments for fixed cost increases, contractual obligations to meet our obligations for our collective bargaining agreements with staff and adjustments for enrollment, like the full-day kindergarten, you know, teacher and paraprofessional that will be required to meet the enrollment increase. That really makes up level services. For us to just meet our contractual obligations, make that adjustment for enrollment, the required fixed costs for operationally, utilities, maintenance contracts, you know, busing increases and so forth, as well as to meet our requirements through special education area, would be a budget that would require a 3.7% increase. So the recommended budget, which is what we're recommending this evening, adds about 0.6% onto that and that the difference between those two really is the additional positions that we're looking for through the NRPS 2021, the academic teacher at the middle school for the foreign language and STEM opportunities, the high school, in case we twelve, we expand, you know, STEAM, science, technology, you know, mathematics, engineering opportunities as well, driven by NRPS 2021. And then those two operational positions, which are included in the recommended column, not the level services column. So that budget would require a 4.3% increase. And then the full requested, if we were to conclude all of the positions that are in NRPS 2021 for next year that have yet to be funded, we'd be looking at adding an additional 5.9 FTEs, which would fund, you know, all of these positions here. And that would essentially require a 5.6% budget increase over fiscal '19. So these other positions certainly would help enhance social and emotional academic support initiatives, continue to enhance our digital learning model, add administrative support to assist with elementary curriculum leadership and address the need for additional supervision and evaluation support and also address the additional maintenance needs of the district. So they're not in our recommended budget proposal, but again, we're trying to balance the fiscal reality of what we're faced with the community and also continue to meet level services and also expand and enhance the district educationally and operationally.
So Michael and John, given that where we're going to see the biggest drop in enrollment is the high school, which was where we have been understaffed the most, we've had the biggest problem with understaffing, we're really not going to gain any teacher reductions here because of our enrollment setting off because elementary is going to go up a little and middle school. In the high school, we've been understaffed for quite a while, so we're catching up.
We're almost coming to a place where we're going to balance.
Right.
Exactly. Not quite, but much closer, you're right.
So I spoke of earlier, where is that 4.3% that we're asking for support of this evening? In reality, it's not too far off where we've been the last few years. We've been able to fund through a lot of advocacy, certainly, you know, Mr. Webster's been a big part of that through his work on the finance planning team in these prior years. We've been able to fund a 3.8% increase and we've done a lot with that increase over the last few years. That's been a little above level services. So we are asking for about 4.3%, which is a little bit more than that, to fund those 5.5 positions and meet all our contractual obligations and our operational needs and so forth, which we think is a relatively reasonable request, although you'll find out in a minute, there's still certainly, you know, a budget gap or some challenges, you know, to kind of fund the request this evening. So just really quick, these last few slides, I'll move through pretty quickly, but, you know, we always look at our pure pupil spending and our pure pupil expenditures and how we compare with the state. And this visual is really a newly published visual as part of the district report card. The DESE is doing a great job publishing this year. And this shows you that we are about 6.6% lower in our pure pupil expenditures than the state is at 14,488, where the state is at 15,450. This has been pretty common and it's been the case in North Reading for a number of years. So I think it really shows you that we, I feel and we, and the administration feels that we certainly continue to provide a high-quality education at lower, you know, pure pupil expenditure levels in North Reading compared to the state and in many cases when compared to our peers. It also quickly shows you that the majority of our funding sources does come from state and local funds. We're not a community that receives a lot of federal funding. We don't qualify for these high federal funding sources. So we are relying a lot on the majority of state and local funds. I talked about budget offsets. I did a very detailed, short, about a 15, 20-minute budget video that talks about budget subsidies and revenue offsets, that if you're more curious of what goes into all the $2.9 million that we're estimating as revenue offsets for fiscal '20 between federal and state grants as well as these revolving accounts, I suggest you kind of go on the website and watch that video. But what I'm tempted to kind of just visualize here that we do have these optional programs, the bus transportation program, the athletic program at the high school, the extracurricular activity program, the performing arts program at each level, the tuition-based kindergarten, full-day kindergarten program and preschool program, that we are assessing user fees and tuitions. Those user fees flow into a revolving account by state law and they directly offset the cost of those programs. So this quickly shows you the direct costs of those programs in the second column here and then the annual user fee contribution that we've come to rely on through the user fees that we do assess and the tuition that we do assess. In a perfect world, we wouldn't have any user fees or any tuitions, but North Reading, you know, is in the same situation as a lot of other communities across the state of Massachusetts and they do assess some fees and some tuitions for these optional programs, but they directly offset, as you can see in most cases, the amount that we receive annually doesn't quite equal 50% of the direct cost that's going into that program. In aggregate, we're at about 48% next year. So that's what I'm tempted to kind of just quickly visualize here. We work very hard to contain our costs. You know, we bid a lot of items, we purchase from state bid lists, we try to get the best educational discount for all of our supplies and services. We modulate boilers and occupancy schedules and our lighting controls, we set those schedules. We're always reviewing those, fine-tuning those to try to save on energy. We work with a consortium to try to get the best gas rate and to lock in at an advantageous time, which we've been able to do successfully over a number of years. Special education, we have a continued commitment to keep students where appropriate in our district through the design of customized programming. This committee advocated strongly last year for the funding of an elementary team chair. We do feel that that team chair has been instrumental in helping us further this design of customized programs and has helped us, you know, keep students certainly in district. We participate, we are members of two collaboratives, but we are a member of the SEAM collaborative and we participate in their shared transportation model where we share our out-of-district transportation costs with the other 14, 15 sending districts and we help reduce that cost. That's been certainly estimated savings, I would say about $50,000 a year annually by participating in that model. Food service program has done, been a really success story over the last five years. It's gone from what was once a pretty large general fund subsidy to being break even and continues to be a goal. And then just constant vigilance with our daily operations. So what does the FY '20 budget accomplish kind of in conclusion here? It certainly funds our contractual obligations with employees and employee unions. It does include additional staffing to achieve educationally sound student-teacher ratios, certainly at the elementary level, kindergarten level, grade one, grade two, very sound class sizes within guideline. It helps us provide full-day kindergarten for all families desiring such. It advances the academic program at the secondary level with an emphasis on expanding foreign language and STEM. So I know that 1.5 FTE, which is only, which was all we're asking for out of the NRPS 2021, not a lot of money, a little over $100,000 and we feel that we would do a lot should that be funded in achieving this objective. It addresses the operational needs of all five schools, focused on maximizing cleaning maintenance, energy consumption efficiencies, seeks to meet the needs of all students, in particular, the district's high-need student population, and then associates, associated operational costs to properly maintain the all five, meets our fixed cost obligations. So that's essentially what the budget accomplishes. There is some financial risks with every budget, school department, municipal budget, there's inherent risk that's involved. We make assumptions, not everything is known. There's always that need for, that potential for an additional outside placement of student move-in and so forth, that's always there. Our revenue estimates that I just showed you of the $2.9 million may not meet projections, that's always there. We think we do a good job at projecting that accurately. We do estimate a teacher attrition savings, so that's built into our salary budget. We know there's going to be teachers retiring, we know of that already. We know there's going to be teachers that do move on for a variety of life circumstances and we do reduce our salary budget to account for those anticipated savings with that turnover and that attrition, with new teachers coming in at a little bit of a lower step in scale. The state budget may not fully fund circuit breaker, for instance, which is a large revenue offset. Utilities costs can sometimes be difficult to predict. We think we've done a pretty good job at predicting that because we track it closely, but those can be variable. Carryover assumptions in terms of where we think we're going to be when some of those revolving accounts may not be realized if something happens over the last quarter of the fiscal year. Snow and ice needs remain uncertain and the food service program has done a very good job, but that can also be difficult to predict on a year-to-year basis. So where do we go from here? Our next steps, ongoing discussions with the finance planning team about available revenues. The present budget gap of our recommended budget based on the last finance planning team is a little over $545,000. Level services is a little over $350,000. So we've been here before. These have been larger numbers at this point before, so we're hopeful, we'll continue to work closely.
Michael, that, the town, when I watched the Sleckman's meeting, when they were discussing the revenues available, the town had like a million-plus deficit, but that was the recommendations of department heads, not the actual. Do they have a true deficit yet or have they not gotten there?
I don't think we've seen that.
We have a finance planning team meeting next Monday.
Okay.
I'm expecting we'll have a little more clarity around that, as of right now, no.
Okay.
So this is kind of where we stood today.
Their meeting with all their department heads had happened after our last meeting.
Okay.
We haven't seen that, the results of that.
So again, this is very fluid information. I'll just say, you know, that this does change and we are expecting it will change at the Monday meeting because there's, you know, there's a lot, not everything in that revenue plan is certainly finalized. There's a lot of different variables that certainly exist. So we're hopeful these numbers will come down, certainly.
And just to clarify, the, I wasn't in finance planning team obviously before this year, but apparently some of the revenue, they were, you know, they weren't putting some revenue on as quickly. I think a lot of the revenue that used to, I know in the past it's been more, over a million dollars at this point in time.
Right.
I think they've put a lot more revenue on there, so it's actually still very, if not more concerning that even with a lot of the revenues on there, we're still $550,000 short of the recommended budget.
Right. I think they've been more aggressive in increasing some of the fees that we collect, et cetera. Yeah.
They have stated that.
So.
So where do we go from here? School committee budget workshop is on April 30th. I apologize, it's actually 3:00 PM this year. We've done 3:30 in the past, but it's, the budget workshop's at 3:00 PM. The budget webinar, which we started doing last year, that's next, a week from this Thursday, that's a lunchtime webinar that myself and Mr. Bernard will be present for. That's from 12 to 1. Good opportunity for families that can't come out to meetings like this to get a similar presentation that you'll hear today. Public hearing on April 8th. Finance committee has now been moved up. It was going to be May 1st. They're asking us to now meet April 10th, so we're trying to accommodate that. That's a Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM. Budget workshop number two, if necessary, April 24th. And that, again, that would be a 3:00 PM meeting. And then the school committee is set to vote on April 29th. Town meeting is now set, I believe, June 10th. And we continue to await state budget actions. You know, we need to still hear from the Senate and the House. The governor's obviously released his budget. We're hopeful that could be movement on the state side and discussion will continue to happen over the next several weeks. With that being said, that concludes my presentation. I don't know if there's any questions, but thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Michael, your number for the para is off.
Okay.
Your number for para is the same as the teacher kindergarten?
Oh, on the slide, okay.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Is there any questions? I think Scott took care of it.
For that?
There was a question about the para cost.
Yeah.
It looks like that's a teacher placeholder amount.
Yeah, I apologize for that. That's probably a typo on the slide, but not on a salary.
Yeah, I think the number's checked out. It was just that that...
The total is the correct number, the 309.
Yeah.
What are you referring to?
Page seven.
Page seven, the top slide. The total is correct, the 309, but the individual one...
The salary carried as a teacher estimated salary, not a para. Second, second one down.
Yep. But again, the total, the correct one is in the budget book, which has...
Yeah, I know it's, I know it's right. I apologize for that.
I do have one question from Mr. Bernard. And Patrick, if he has the information, with the requirement, the civics requirement, that is that start next year? And is that going to require additional teaching staff?
Not additional teaching staff, but kind of a reallocation of existing staff.
So that'll be social studies teachers that maybe were teaching geography or how?
Could mean that.
You don't know?
I think we have a, no, we do know. We have a much better thought-out plan than just throwing someone into an area where they haven't necessarily taught. We also are anticipating some staff that are retiring. They're going to open up opportunities, just by virtue of, you know, their plans coming to fruition, that we're going to be hiring somebody, at least one new teacher.
But it won't require budget addition?
No, no.
Yeah. It's mostly May 3rd, and so our teachers have been, we've been preparing for it for a bunch of years, so they're going to be ready in the fall. We started last summer, went to a workshop on that, we've been writing that curriculum. There is also a civics project requirement that we're going to pick outside the box and kind of have...
You did great.
It's exciting, but it's also, you know, it's a lot of work also. That's a minor high school.
Yep. Thank you.
Marcy?
I have a couple of questions all over the place. The first is, I guess, somewhat a philosophical question. On the page 10 chart, budget offsets. I note that the user fee contribution for athletics is 42%, but for extracurriculars it's 65%. And I'm just wondering philosophically why one group would contribute more through user fees than another group?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. We've sort of, as you may recall, we kind of increased, a few, a couple of years ago now, I think fiscal '17, we did increase that $200 user fee. It was 100, and it raised to 200. And that is the one area that we're kind of above that 50% or above, at the 65% threshold. On the athletics, we've been, in the previous years, we've been closer to, you know, more of a 50/50, you know, split. We have seen just the athletic, the needs around the athletic program grow through increased ice time, increased rental, pool rental. So that disparity has gotten larger, and the revolving account has been a little bit less over the last few years. I think it was about 45 or 46% last year, and now we're projecting, based on the cost, that to be at 42%. But it's a good question. It is an area that we do plan to look at. As you, as you know, we increased, or we added the performing arts user fee for the first time this fiscal year in '19. That's in addition to the student club extracurricular fee. And I think we wanted to give it, give those two programs kind of two years, to collect two years of data, before we started adjusting or making changes to a user fee. But I think that's, I think it's fair to say, at least for myself and Mr. Bernard, I've had some conversations with that, is an area we plan to look at in the near future.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just think that there should be parity.
I just said philosophically, I think we saw a need to have more funding not from, you know, taxes or whatever, and so we looked at the different fees. So philosophically, while the percentage doesn't seem fair, I think it was hard to say, okay, let's go up to $500 for the, so we're kind of looking at, if you spend $200, you can have, participate in 10 extracurricular activities or 10 clubs.
Yeah, no, I...
So, I mean, but I hear what you're saying in terms of the fairness of it, the equity of it, yeah.
Yeah. And then just some other budgetary questions. So the full-day kindergarten user fee, if, the new position is funded by, by that?
Partially. Partially.
Partially.
So that...
57%?
If that was on the slide, I meant to reference that. That wasn't entirely a sort of an impact to the general fund, because there's additional revenue flowing in from additional students as part of the full-day kindergarten program. It's not, it doesn't cover the full cost of that teacher in the para, but...
It's sort of the half, like a half.
Yeah, it's about half, maybe a little bit more than half.
Okay.
And this really gets us back to more what we were in the past, because this year's kindergarten class was much smaller.
That's right.
Because a little school only has one kindergarten class, there's only, I think, 25 to 30 students total in the little school. So it really is restoring a position from last year.
Okay. And then I understood you to say, Michael, that the difference between the recommended budget and the level services is basically the positions in the NRPS 2021 plus the operating, operational need positions? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
So it's the last four positions? So I just, adding up the four positions, the lower four positions on page seven, I got $213,971.
Yeah, it's $20,000.
But when I subtracted the difference in the salary from the recommended to the level services on page eight, I got $193. There's a $20,000 difference there, and I just...
Okay.
I just thought maybe you could check on that?
I think it might have been some of the offsets, too, some of the cost savings.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was the custodial offsets.
Is that the right direction? I'm not even sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Can't think of it in my head.
Yeah, so I'm not sure.
I know exactly what it is.
Okay.
Because in the level services budget, you had to add back the $20,000...
That's what I was wondering.
...of the expenses contractually, because you're giving...
Oh, that's right. That's right. Yeah.
It is. And that was $20,000.
Okay. And lastly, not really a question, but just maybe clarification or something. You could reiterate what you said on page four on the preliminary budget slide for the special education tuitions, the out-of-district tuitions. So you said there were 37 students in FY '19, but 32 students for FY '20?
Correct.
Is that...
That's correct, yeah.
Is that correct?
It is.
And, but there's a six, still a 16.3% increase?
Right. Now, that increase to the general fund isn't all because, isn't all the result of a tuition cost. It's actually, part of that's a result of a loss of...
Of the one-time funds.
One-time revenue.
Okay, I wrote that down. So that's because of the one-time funds?
Yeah.
Okay, I just think when we look at this and go to the community, and I, you know, I have no issue with this number, but when you look at that, the dollar increase of the $305,000 for the tuitions is 23% of the entire increase. And we're obligated to do it, but I just think that's something that needs to be...
I think Michael's presentation, and we'll reiterate the point, Marcy, is that we had changes in placement, unfortunately, that became more expensive.
No, and I understand. I'm not really asking why, but I guess I'm saying, to the point that when the school department is making the budgetary request...
It may be helpful to have that.
To the town, there's not a choice, and that's 23% of the whole, it's a disproportionate amount of the entire increase. It's 23% of the entire increase.
Yeah, it is. I mean, a big part of the request is really our funds that really are just to meet our obligations. There are really a lot of out of our control.
Right. And I just want to make sure, hammer that home.
And that's the level service budget.
Correct.
That's right.
Correct.
Right, right.
Just hammering that home. Okay. Thank you for the...
That's a point well made.
Just to say it again, the only difference between the level service and recommended is the $213,000 in salary and then the offset of the operational.
Correct.
That's right.
That's correct.
I'll reserve most of my comments for the workshop, but the one, I mean, overall, when we were doing the, I think Rich and I met for the subcommittee beforehand.
Subcommittee, yeah.
And I think there was, obviously, $305,000 is a big number for the, you know, for the special education. Two of the positions are just restoring a position that was caught last year because we had an unusually small class, which is really not any, you know, we're not increasing anything. The middle school, they're also trying to potentially have the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders on the same schedule. I don't know why we ever had them not on the same schedule, but that will also allow them to all be on the same schedule, which will also allow for sharing amongst paraprofessionals and other administrative staff, which can't happen right now because the sixth graders and the seventh and eighth graders are on different schedules, and then it's just the building people. So it's not like, it's really not like that we're requesting a ton of extravagant things. It's trying to put the schedules together. I know that's only a piece of it, but to me, that was...
You're right.
That was an important piece as well to point out, because I remember when I got on the school committee, I, you know, went and talked to the middle school principal, and she was like, oh, yeah, and this is the schedule, which is, it would confuse me, and there's bells ringing constantly in the, in the building, because there's just different times, so...
And to your point, which is a good one, I do, if you've been on the committee for at least, you know, all of you should have heard the presentation at least once with the school improvement plan presentation that Kathy O'Connell does in June, but that idea of alignment of the schedule is something that she has brought up at least two years in a row, and we think we have an opportunity to capture a lot with that one-half position that Michael outlined in the budget. So there's a more significant byproduct that Scott alluded to with the, with the sharing of staff that could also, you know, be a...
And Dr. O'Connell brought that schedule a long way from 67 years ago.
She has, yes.
Where we had all these study halls.
Correct.
And I think, and when Scott uses the word extravagant, I'd never call our budget extravagant. I always look, and I know foreign languages is an area of a lot of controversy today, how important is foreign language, et cetera, but I always look back to my old high school, Harrell High School, that still offers six foreign languages, including Latin.
Yeah.
I wish we could offer Latin, but, you know, we have, we have two, and that's, that's it. I mean, you know, we had German for a while, and I just, so our budgets can never be extravagant, and, you know, a lot of these districts start foreign language a lot earlier than we do. And we just don't, we don't have the funding for that, so...
And I would just say that, and as you say, a lot of comments will be made in the workshop. I can tell you, Mel, that I'll be taking up your mantle on the, on the operational positions, because I just think those are so important for the fiscal, to fulfill our fiduciary responsibility on the committee, so...
Put all the money into the facilities, and then don't staff up to preserve the facilities.
We'll be hit with big bills where down the road if we're not careful.
Yep.
Julie? I just have a quick question. I know, you know, every year we have our strategic plan, and we fall short because, you know, we never really put forward the recommended budget. And I'm kind of wondering where we are with what every year we leave behind, but yet now we're at, you know, 2020, and, you know, I'm looking over the recommended budget. Is these just things that we couldn't implement last year or the previous year? And who's kind of keeping track of, you know, where we, where our goals were and where we're at as far as implementing those goals?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's, there's two answers, I think, two-part answer to the question. We keep track of it when I do an annual presentation in the fall, and I identify for the committee each year kind of what the annual update has been, and so we usually do that with a kind of a color coding system. And so when I did that presentation in October, it would have identified what, what we had fallen short on from that one prior year. What Michael has shared in the slide tonight kind of captures, I think, the spirit of what we had hoped to get with a full implementation of year four, which was a little, both a little bit of a catch-up.
Okay.
What things we hadn't realized in the past, and also what would have been in year four in and of itself. So some of them would have been newly introduced, but others would have been those that we hadn't achieved in the past. And to some degree, the strategic plan does, it's lofty, you know, the goals of the plan are lofty, but at the same time, I don't, you know, I would, I wouldn't use the word extravagant, you know, to the earlier comment, but I think that they are the things that we feel we, we need to do the best work, and we just, we strike the balance with what the community is able to afford, and certainly that is dictated by what we receive for information in the finance planning team meetings.
I would hope to see, when you move forward, and I know this probably won't happen this year, but the two full-time positions for adjustment counselor, psychologist at the elementary schools, I think those positions pay off in spades at all levels in terms of improved academic performance. If you have kids who are more comfortable in school and more comfortable in their life because of what we can do for them, and I know people might say, well, that's something that, you know, that should be done at the home and blah. These kids need this. We've seen, I think we've seen what's happened at the high school and the middle school by adding those psychologists and guidance counselors.
I agree.
And I think if we can do it at the elementary school, we, we maybe eliminate some of the need at the higher levels, because we catch those kids earlier.
You very well could.
So I would just hope that, you know, we can aggressively move forward with those. It's always been something that I've tried to focus on getting into the districts, so I hope we can move forward with those.
We had for years, how many years was the discussion around the additional counselor at the high school, right?
And I'll take that mantle.
Yeah. There you go.
Take one more comment to Mel's point. I've worked in districts where there have been school adjustment counselors at the elementary level, and to see, you know, seeing the work that they do, how important it is for discipline, for instruction, for sped referrals, I mean, it is, you, I can't believe that we've gotten away with not having those positions at our elementary schools. And having been, you know, having worked in those systems, I can't imagine functioning without them, and how much the teachers and the administrators and the students rely on them. So I think that that's a pretty important thing that we should be thinking about for the future.
John, is it fair to say that, just to sort of restate what you said, nothing drops off the plan, unless, unless we determine that circumstances have changed and it's no longer a priority?
Yeah, there might be an exception, but that's true.
Nothing drops off because we weren't able to do it one year.
Correct.
We continue to work on fully supporting the plan.
That's right.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, my goodness, okay. Yeah, that's what I... Well, we started at 10 of, 10 of 7 and went...
It's actually 6:41.
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's go, catch back up to where we were. So under continue business, the school committee policies. Rich and Diana?
So these are second readings, so we can probably go through them fairly quickly. I want to make sure I have the right thing here.
If you don't mind, there was some feedback from the first reading. I know it's been a few weeks, but...
Yep.
I think what you have in front of you does, I can share with you, if it's not totally clear with the, with the track changes, I can help you with what was talked about at the last meeting in the first reading. So would that be helpful?
Yes.
Okay, so on the emergency school evacuation, emergency closing school evacuation in paragraph two...
Right.
It's the, the suggested change from the first reading was to eliminate the close or evacuate and add in alter the school day as noted above.
Right.
And then the other change is in the paragraph after the item four there, which was to take out committee policy in and add in the adopted policies and procedures for. So those were the two changes from the first reading.
Yeah, that reflects what...
And everything else was, was something you already saw.
Perfect.
out committee policy in and add in the adopted policies and procedures for. So those were the two changes from the first reading.
That reflects what
And everything else was, was, was something you already saw.
Perfect.
So you want to take the ropes and make your motions?
Sure. I will move that, that, um, that we accept the second reading of policy AFC, school district organization, emergency closing school evacuation.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Policy CGA, general school administration.
Yes, the only change that came out of the first reading was to change the title of the policy to administrator contracts.
That's right.
Yep. So I will move to accept the second reading of policy CGA administrator contracts.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Policy CGAC supervisor of buildings and grounds employment contract.
Yes, and the one change that we incorporated was the last sentence, the contract is available through the superintendent's office that had not been in the policy previously.
Just to make it consistent with other
Exactly right.
Information.
Yep, that's exactly right.
So I will move to, that we accept the second reading of policy CGAC supervisor of buildings and grounds employment contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Policy CGAD, school food services contract.
There was some feedback on this one as well. And what was added in is in the text of the, of the policy after the word school committee was to add in through the superintendent or his or her designee. And also the last sentence, a copy of the contract is available through the superintendent's office. Those are, those have been updated.
We're just in time on this one.
Yes.
Exactly.
I move that we accept the second reading of policy CGAD, school food services contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Policy CGCA recruitment of principals.
There was some feedback on this one as well. I think what had been talked about has been captured here by, in the first sentence of the text, it was suggested to add, to actually take from the third paragraph and move to the first paragraph, school committee delegates to the superintendent, the responsibility for selecting a suitable candidate who possesses the skills and ability to carry out the duties of the principalship. So that was just moved into paragraph one.
So I, I have some questions and comments here as well. So, and I didn't bring this up the last one, but, so it looks like in the, in the previous version of this, the school committee had the authority to ultimately fill the position. It seemed like the superintendent ran the search, but the school committee voted on that.
Correct.
And now, which is in conflict with other policies within our handbook, because I looked this up because
Which ones?
GCBB and GCF, GCF in particular, talks about how it's the superintendent's authority to do this. And in under
What are the other two policies? What positions are they?
They're both.
Might just help me to understand it, which
You look at the two, so
Oh, okay. It's not, it's not around a certain
Employment of, employment of principals.
Okay.
Think the one GCF, it's MASC GCF, it's North Reading GBD, professional staff hiring. It says administrative responsible for the hiring of a staff member in parentheses, in the case of district-wide positions, comma, for the position of principals, comma, it is a superintendent. So it's saying, yes.
We've never, in my fifteen years, the school committee has never voted on a principal.
Oh, they don't.
Yes.
It's not, it's Ed Reform.
But again, I was just looking because we're changing this policy. The policy was giving the school committee the authority.
Right.
Even, even, even with the changes, it is still saying the school committee delegates to the superintendent the responsibility, which still implies that the school committee has the ultimate responsibility for hiring the principals. If we're delegating that to the superintendent.
Well, it doesn't mean
So I'm just asking more
Doesn't mean we have final approval. It just means we're, we're giving, in fact, we are
Right, we're giving him, conceding the right to him.
Again, if we, if we're going to make any changes, I don't, I don't want to, you know, again, when we're updating policies, I don't want to make any substantive changes to the balance of, of power. And again, the previous, the previous version of this policy indicated that the school committee had the authority, but I don't think that was the case. I don't think that's what the, what the practice was.
So do we need to change the other
No, the other policies I think are correct, which says it's the superintendent's authority.
So this seems like, so you're wondering if delegates is enough of alignment with that policy or if we're not going far enough?
Well, and, and I wanted to make sure that, again, because I'm still relatively new, it's only my second year. I mean, I still wanted to make sure that that was the practice in the past. I called Mr. Vinesi and messaged Mr. Webster to just see, and they're like, both of them said, I don't think we've ever voted on a principal and, but that's what the previous policy said.
Okay.
And so I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page.
So the update then does reflect that.
Well, you could change, you could take the school committee delegates out of there and just say when, when an opening in a principalship occurs, the superintendent is responsible for selecting a suitable candidate. You could take that first part out of there, the school committee delegates.
School committee delegates to
To the, right, you say the superintendent is responsible.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's what it is, I mean, just because it seems, like, again, I did some research on the other policies and it seemed
That is the practice.
Correct.
Julie?
It doesn't matter to me.
Is that MASC guidelines?
Yes.
Yeah, it's Ed Reform, yeah.
Yeah, North Reading, North Reading GBD and MASC GCF are the same policy, but it's the language.
If it's the use of the word delegates.
Yeah, just take that out of there and then go with the superintendent is responsible. I think that
So when the principal, when an opening in a principal, principalship occurs
The superintendent
The superintendent
Has the responsibility?
Has the responsibility, yeah.
So when an opening in a principalship occurs, the superintendent has the responsibility for selecting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. I just want to make sure there's no confusion in the future about who has the authority if this ever came up, so.
That makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Is it enough that we need to read, take it down to a first reading again, or can we do it as amended to second?
I don't know what the rules are on that. That's a good question.
I don't know.
Well, I know when we were in policy, if we revised it that much, you would say that we need to go for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we do.
I think, I think on this one I would
Do this in the first reading?
I can bring it up on April.
We'll do it for a first reading tonight as revised, yeah.
So I move that we accept the first reading of policy CGCA as revised on recruitment of principals.
Second.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you though.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you.
Policy CGI educator evaluation for administrators and principals. And I don't think there are any, are there any changes in this one, in the last, in the last meeting?
Let me see, excuse me, there are not.
It's more change in the effective administrative leadership to educator evaluation.
Yeah, so it's really, this policy was just about lining up with the fact that we use ed eval.
Yep, that's correct.
So I will move to accept the second reading of policy CGI educator evaluation for administrators and principals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Policy DJEA purchasing authority.
There were no recommended changes from the first reading on this one.
We took out specific, and what we did originally was take out the specific references to town bylaws so that we didn't have to track changes.
Right.
That's correct.
So I move to accept the second reading of policy DJEA purchasing authority.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
And finally, policy JGFH wireless communication devices.
There was a bit of feedback on this one. And it is in paragraph one, the words non-school issued were added in from the first reading.
Yep.
And then in paragraph two, what's read at the start with the exception as noted below, that's, that's been added in since the first reading.
I still don't like the language.
Yeah, I
I still hate the wallet hearing to the spirit of the use, I would almost take that out and just start with the North Reading School Committee recognizes the need for high school students to be connected at times or something.
I, I had a question racked with the language too with, on the last paragraph.
It just, I mean, again, it completely contradicts it. It says, well, adhering to the policy above.
The spirit of the
I would, I would just take out from while to the word above.
I think when we met as a subcommittee, that language was just pulled from the high school handbook. That's, I think, how it was, that's the language that was in there. I'm not advocating for it to stay, I'm just saying it gives it a context.
I, I agree with Scott that you don't, since
Finally, in two years.
Since we're saying, I don't know if we need that first qualifier. We're saying that the school committee recognizes the need.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if you need that adhering to the spirit above, but I would approve it either way. I don't, I don't care.
I would just cut it to and put the as the first word.
And I don't think that that's a major change that
No.
I think we could approve it as a second reading tonight.
I agree.
The elimination of paragraph three?
No, 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 just the first
Just while adhere, while adhering to the spirit of the use of wireless communication devices as outlined above.
You could just start with the.
Start with the North
Yeah, the North Reading School Committee recognizes the need for high school students to be connected.
Diana, do you have any thoughts on that? Just because you and I, you and I talked about it, so.
Yeah, no, it's, I think that's fine.
Are you comfortable that it doesn't change the
Yep.
Fact, okay. Diana, yeah?
Yeah.
And we agree that it doesn't require to return to the first reading?
I think on, I think on this one, you're okay.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Therefore, I will move that we accept the second reading of policy JGFH as amended for wireless communication devices.
Second.
Thank you.
Will you throw that up me, Cindy?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Mr. Bernard, I have a question. Are we scheduling a week to come another day or are you going to take over the
I, I, if you don't have any questions that are, that I can't handle, I'm just, I'm pinch hitting for Amy Lockwood, so I'll do my best, but I think I can, she wasn't able to be, she wasn't able to be at the last meeting when, when this, when we had the snow day. I think, I think I can cover this for her?
Do you think?
Surveys? I'm happy to try. All right. The reason I gave you two new surveys from what you got from your packet for the last meeting is there was a change in the questions. It was, it's somewhat minor, but at a CIT board meeting that I was at last week, we thought it might be helpful to try to get some, some data on the use of, of cannaboid oils. So if you look at question in the middle school survey, which is the yellow one now, question eight and question twelve, that's the only change. You'll see that as we gather data around students and, and their use of any, we added in the CBD product. So it's the last bullet in question eight and the last bullet in question twelve. That's the only change from the prior survey. And then the, in the high school survey, which is the green one, did these in the school colors, the green and gold in case you It's question eight and question thirteen. It's the same thing, just the use, we're trying to gather some data on the use of a CBD product.
And are these essentially the same exact questions we've asked the past
Only number nine is different.
To that question, it's, I think it's nine and eight and twelve and nine and thirteen, eight, nine and thirteen?
I think only number nine is in the, not in the middle school one?
Correct, it's in the high school one, right.
Okay.
Within the past year, have you used cocaine?
That's right. Otherwise, the questions are the same. They are, they are, they are centered on kind of the five areas where the grant requires the town to collect data, the drug-free, drug-free communities grant. And so that's, the, the surveys are not unlike what you've seen in the past.
And this is anonymous?
This is anonymous.
And it's opt-in?
Voluntary or mandatory?
Yes, correct. It is not a mandatory survey.
Okay. Do they need a certain number in order to have it, the sufficient data, data?
We will, we will have a sufficient number. We have very good participation because we do it during the school day.
Okay.
It's not something that is an open, an open
You can do this or continue the lecture.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it paper?
It is not. It's electronic. We're doing it on the Chromebooks.
Do you have it, when, do you know when she wants to do this?
Yes, we're, we're, right now, we're colliding with kind of MCAS schedules, so we're, we're trying to strike the balance on when the appropriate time, but it's, it's going to be very soon. I would say within the next four to six weeks.
Okay.
At the middle school, it's going to be done largely through the health classes because all students take health in the middle school. And in the high school, where only ninth and tenth grade is due, we're also going to take advantage of the power block time and rotate power blocks through.
Okay.
We will get, we will get a very, we traditionally have gotten a very good participation rate on these kinds of surveys.
Is this the one that last year some kids were double counting? They were taking it twice?
Yeah, that's what Amy told us.
In eighth grade?
She did have
We had, we had like a hundred to one percent participation.
In the presentation, I think she recognized, right, that there was a data flaw there.
So has that been adjusted somehow for this year?
I, I don't know why it wouldn't have been, but, you know, she kind of oversees that administration, but I think she recognized that that was a flaw last year.
And, and I would also add just, I think we had some input on the sleeping questions from the school start times committee.
Oh, you know what? I'm, I'm very glad you brought it up. You're right, and those questions, yes, thank you. So the school, do you want to talk about it or do you want?
Sure, yeah. I mean, so
Thank you.
So at one of our recent school start time committee meetings, Patrick mentioned that we had an opportunity to, to, to add some questions in that were specifically about sleeping. So the question, for instance, how true are the following statements of question thirty-five? I get enough sleep on weeknights, I get enough sleep on weekend, weekends. We, we crafted a few questions just to sort of help us see where students were, were on, how they felt they were getting enough sleep. So we're looking forward to those results and
Oh, excellent.
Form our
That was smart.
Yeah, it was a great collaboration between Patrick and Amy, so.
That's great.
Always thinking. All right, thank you. Do we need
Do we need a presentation?
I think, I think you need a vote, yes, on this.
I always just love presentation discussion. All right, could I get a motion to accept the two surveys, one for the middle school, one for the high school? I'm assuming we can do that collectively.
I'll move to approve and allow the core measurement survey administration at both the middle school and high school.
Second.
All right, any other comments?
Diana.
Or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Mr. Conley, would you like to
Yes.
brief us with the food service contract?
So this evening for you is the recommendation to award the food service management and operation contract. The district administered in RFP request for proposal this year because the, the window of time of the Chartwell's contract was, was up at the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth. So we went through and we went through that process. We received three proposals. And Chartwell's, after a lengthy review with members of the evaluating committee, that also included an interview with Chartwell's management team, did emerge as the most advantageous proposal. The committee did put together a rather detailed action plan with members of the Chartwell's management team as a condition of the award of areas of focus during the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. That action plan, the summary of that action plan was included in the memo that was included in your packet this evening. So what we're really looking for this evening is a recommendation and a motion to officially award the food service operation and management contract to Chartwell's for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. You know, I think it was a good, good process that we go through and, you know, they really did emerge as the, you know, the company that had the greatest, you know, awareness and understanding of what the needs of the district are. And they did provide the most aggressive, you know, financial proposal in terms of a, projected profit and a financial commitment to the district. So I do think it's advantageous.
That's the guy on the way out the door. I hate to do this, but I, I just don't understand this. I, I see expense, Chartwell's expenses are the highest. Who's, I guess I don't understand who's exp, is those our expenses? Chartwell's, I'm trying to understand how they were selected based on, is it because their profit guarantee is higher?
So their expenses are higher because they're projecting more meals sold. And therefore their, their costs are higher because they're selling more product. So this, this is their proposal. This is their, based on their assumptions. They, they review a variety of information with the district. They do site walkthroughs. And what's included on the handout was just, you know, I, I literally took their proposals and just put it on paper. They're, they're advantageous because they are projecting the highest profit at the end of this year.
Why, why is Whitson's proposing so many fewer paid meals? I, I don't understand that. That's a significant number.
Yeah, they, they make, I mean, they, they have different business models. They have different pricing models. I think it's fair to say Whitson has tried to take a kind of a conservative approach.
All vegetarian. Just kidding.
Chartwell's knowing the district, knowing the things that they're hoping to do with the breakfast programs next year and expansion of that program. I think they were more aggressive in what they, they felt they could do with, with paid reduced and, you know, à la carte sales. Which is probably why you're seeing the discrepancy. I tried to give you some context by putting the FY 18 kind of P and L, closing P and L there. So I think, I think it's fair to say, I think Whitson's gave a very kind of honest, realistic, conservative proposal. Chartwell's was clearly a little bit more aggressive in what they feel like they can do. They clearly know the district more. As a result, I think their expenses are greater just because they're, they're projecting to do that much more. With, with their, with their food sales and so forth. They also have a different, a little bit of different business model in terms of, with, with their, you know, food costs and rebates and so forth that the district receives. But in the end, they are projecting the highest profit and they are giving us the district the most, the highest financial guarantee.
Mike's Mike. So is the Appy group, is that kind of a more, not alternative, but do they provide, do they look at more healthy, health-oriented meals or a different kind of service? Or is it the same kind of thing?
They were the same, the same type of thing. You know, they, they're a family-run business. They're looking to get into Massachusetts. They're based out of Vermont. They're based out of New York. You know, they have a lot of, mainly their, their business is in Vermont right now. They're trying to expand into Massachusetts. They don't have, you know, Massachusetts clients at the moment.
Because I'd never seen their name before and I was wondering if it was something.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, I, I was a little confused by the numbers because they were all over the place where it's just like free meals, whatever. But, but with, with that being said, I mean, to me, it wasn't even about the profit. Because I think, again, whether it's a guarantee of 25 or 20,000 or whether it's 15,000 or 9,000, it's not a huge difference. And I would just say if the, if Chartwell's is, to me, it's more known because they've actually been in the schools, actually providing the service for the costs that they're, they're telling us. For the last couple of years, I mean, they've gotten closer to break even. And to me, that would be the overriding report. Again, because one's saying 20,000 in free meals, the other one's 31,000 or, and, and the, the other thing with Chartwell's was the à la carte was a lot more expensive, a lot higher than, than the other ones. But again, the fact that they've proven it the last couple of years means a lot to me, so.
And what, Michael, could you please, for those of us who, who haven't been here or maybe haven't tracked the changes, how long has Chartwell's been?
Chartwell's has been here, I think, about, you know, 15 years.
I've been here 16 years and they've been here.
So, so Chartwell's, so Chartwell's was here when the program was at its lowest, but you've been able to work with them over the last?
Yeah, so this, this last contract period or this last five years, which was the last time we did kind of an RFP process, believe it or not, was five years ago.
Yep.
We've, we've, we've worked with them, you know, each year and we've, we've reached our objective. And we've gone, really gone from a hundred, over $100,000 six-figure loss to a $2,000 or $3,000 profit at the end of this year, last year. So they've certainly, you know, done, done a lot to work with us to improve the program. They certainly have a good pulse on, on the district, on the community. They've proven themselves to be kind of a good loyal, you know, partner in our initiatives to continue to improve the program, to provide more nutritional value options. And to expand breakfast program, which has been an initiative. And to really, you provide a program that provides an opportunity for those students that are receiving a reduced price meal or a free lunch meal to have access to that program.
Yep.
So I, I did feel like reimbursement was aggressive, but I think they have a good plan to achieve that. I think it's opportunity they had to, to achieve their, when you look at the reimbursement dollars or value there. So I, you know, I, I do think they're, it's a good process to go through and I'm glad we do it every three or five years, the full process of a full RFP. And we took it pretty seriously and interviewed and brought each vendor in and just, just had them answer additional questions. But I really do feel like it's, they are the most advantageous proposal.
Mike. This is different than, and this is different than a straight low bid thing. When it's not saying, hey, how much are you going to charge us to provide X, right? But they're still, they're still promising the highest profit anyway. They're still the best number.
It's still the best.
When it comes down to it anyway.
Essentially, we have a $25,000 financial guarantee up to their number.
Right.
So that's, that's why it's the best.
It's the best, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. I have a couple of questions on breakfast. So two quick things. I know we have to go to party, but.
I think, I know, I think that's not happening.
Okay. So number one, it says they want to increase breakfast. Is it still, is it going to be only before-school kids? Or is, are they trying to offer it to students that are coming in at regular time for drop-off?
Yep.
Is it?
I mean, I think we, we, sort of a trial this year at the Bachelor Elementary School.
Right.
And that's geared towards the before-school program.
Okay.
I think ultimately the goal is to offer it, you know, student across each, to all, all school students in the school.
And how, how would that work if you just get there at the time that school starts, if you're being offered breakfast when school starts?
So it, I mean, it would be limited to those students that aren't there, you know, for enough time before the start of the school year, the school day. We, we've certainly looked at other opportunities or other options, you know, breakfast in the classroom is a topic that's been discussed. It's something that we haven't wanted to pursue. So it's, that's why, in a lot of ways, it's, it is sort of limited to those students that are arriving, you know, a little bit before the start of the school.
There are kids there for the preschool program, right?
There are.
There are.
Not preschool, preschool, but before school.
There's a wide variety of rival tests, even on the buses.
Exactly.
But again, but if, but if there are students that are coming to school without having breakfast, they weren't, again, I don't know if it's a big problem or anything. But like if there are students that are getting dropped off without it and there was a way to make sure that students that didn't eat before they got there at least had something. I, I was just wondering because it said in, in expand breakfast. I didn't know if we were only focusing on the kids that are there, you know, before school starts or not. And then there was a comment about bundling breakfast at elementary and secondary level. I, I didn't understand what that comment was about.
That is providing sort of a grab-and-go bundled breakfast option as a means to ensuring that when the student takes the mail, they're taking at least three of the five components to make that a type A reimbursable mail.
Yeah, three, as required so we can get reimbursed.
Yeah, so if you do that.
But changes from à la carte to?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and a bundle is easy to grab and helps solve that problem of, I don't have a lot of time, just grab it and go.
So that, that assumption that they would do that is a big part of why their reimbursement dollars.
Maybe we can rearrange the bus schedules to get everybody there 15 minutes early. Then they can buy, buy breakfast.
That'd be great if we could, if we could do that.
It'd be an offset.
I know that would be more for Chartwell later on, but it just, I just didn't know. I was, I was just looking at breakfast and I thought it was interesting, so.
And I do want to thank the administration. I know that there's a, a local mom who I think is a nutritionist who's taken an interest in our lunch program. And I know that, I think you guys have talked to her and she's had some.
We did.
And our veggie, meatless Monday and, and other things. And I appreciate.
Yeah, we've kind of gone the optional route with that.
But I appreciate you talking to.
Yeah, we had a very good meeting.
The community. I know she has some good ideas about.
I think so.
So.
She was, it was a helpful meeting.
Yeah.
And I really appreciate that this process was gone through in what appears to be in a serious way and that you weren't, that it wasn't just a, you got full, full proposals from, from different companies and. It's good.
There is a motion that was on page two.
I was just going to ask for one.
I will move that the school committee vote to award the contract for the operation and management of the food service program to Chartwell's from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020.
My only other question is why only one year?
Yeah, why one year?
So the, the DESE doesn't really allow you to do almost a multi-year contract now. They, they like you, you have to go through this more detailed thorough RFP process either once every three or five years. And then you amend the agreement. If you, so you're allowed to renew and amend, but you can't enter into a multi-two-year agreement.
Okay, thank you.
We can hold them to the fire.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Chartwell's, and thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Ms. Bernard, would you like to?
Be happy to.
Explain the fine arts subcommittee.
Fine arts subcommittee. So I think this is, you know, this is something that has been tossed around somewhat lightly, I think, for a couple of years at least, maybe by members of the school committee and with the administration. So taking heed from a more recent discussion with the, with the school committee and also in looking at your established goals for the year. I reached out to Kyle Alista and Allison Kane, who represent the middle and high school arts departments and, and share some leadership responsibilities for the district. To see if they, if in fact the committee chose to go in the direction of establishing a fine arts subcommittee, that would they, would they be interested? Again, I think this was part of a conversation that the committee had to serve with, with two appointed members of the school committee. And I suggested that Mr. Conley and I would also be willing to sit as members of that subcommittee if it were in fact formed. So I don't want to read to you what I wrote, but I think I shared with you both as an email and now in my report to you for tonight's meeting, kind of the text of what I had shared. And I, I can tell you that they, both Mrs. Lister and Mrs. Kane were pretty quick in their response to me that they would be very interested in seeing something like this formed. I suggested that, you know, there might be like, to start at least anyway, four, four meetings or so a year. And I identified for them and certainly there's, we're not bound by anything, you are not bound by anything here. But I had shared with them what I thought from the conversations that the committee had, what might be some of the objectives of a fine arts committee. So review, much like we do as a subcommittee with the athletics, that we would review the fine arts revolving account, what the fee structures are. And make any, you know, decisions for, for our own recommendations to the full committee on any changes to be implemented, program and performance reviews. How the, the district can, can be of additional support to them and particularly having, you know, the school committee more, maybe more regularly attuned to what is going on in the area of fine arts. Might be helpful to, to their overall program and performance schedule. And, and then just to serve as a kind of a general advocacy group for, for fine arts across the district grades, kindergarten through 12. So I, I did my best to try and capture what I thought the wishes of the committee were. It would be my recommendation to you that if you think something like this has, has value and you want to move forward with it, that you can, you know, vote to form that committee. And then appoint two representative members from the school committee. And we can get to work on, you know, starting that either this spring or start it with the 1920 school year, whatever you, whatever you prefer.
So I still feel pretty strongly that this is a, a, a good thing to do, especially getting the feedback from Mrs. Lister and Mrs. Kane, that they're, they feel positive about it as well as, as you say. So I, I think it's, it's, we've seen the, the impact that they've, they're having on the community and, and the work they're doing. And it's, and it's pretty significant. And so I think it's something we should consider moving forward with.
I mean, now, now that they're in favor of it, my opinion changed. Just kidding.
Get back on it. I do, I just, unfortunately, the, the times of the meetings are some, we were, the, the athletic subcommittee was always kind of bound to that 12:30 start time because of the availability of
Right.
largely the athletic director, because he does also teach, but also the, the afternoons are not conducive, you know, he's bound to related job obligations. So I think with, with, with the fine arts subcommittee, and I'm, I'm offering this, I'm kind of sensing that you're probably going to go in the direction of forming this committee. But the availability of school committee members, you know, you just, I think you need to be aware that a 2:30, something like a 2:30 start is probably what's going to be needed in order for their, their work to continue.
Four times a year.
Four times a year.
It would be four times, you know, at least, at least, yeah, right, exactly. I did, I think I framed that in here, didn't I? Yeah, so, just so you're aware, I mean, it might, might not always be the best time for somebody like some of you to, to work around a work schedule or other obligations you have, but, so.
And I, you know, we'll, we'll see if we vote to form the committee and then see who's interested. But even though those times aren't, my personal interest in serving on that committee is, still remains, so.
I'm going to move that we form a fine arts subcommittee. And then we, and then we shall name school committee representatives after the committee is approved.
Second.
Can I just offer a comment from the administration?
Do we need to outline it a little bit more that it's?
I don't know that you do. My comment was, I think you have a good framework to work off, off of. My comment was going to be, I, I was going to thank you for, for taking this on and, and supporting what I think is, you know, has, you know, a, a pretty significant value. That, that department has grown. It has grown significantly. And its body of work, I think, has spoken for itself in, in recent years. And I think for them to know that the school committee is interested in supporting them further will, I think, only embolden them to, to continue to do good work, so.
I agree. And I think in terms of perception in the community, it raises that level up to, you know, athletics gets a lot of the visibility, right? We, we do a good job making the arts visible, but I think it helps improve the perception of it community-wise.
Yeah, I agree. So thank you.
Yes, Julie?
Just the connection to the elementary school fine arts programs as well, you know, that consistency of what's happening.
Yeah, and I think this will, this will help that.
Yeah, I think that's.
Absolutely will help that, yeah.
That'll be an important part of the mission.
Yeah.
So. So if you, I think you have the, you need to vote to establish and then maybe a vote to appoint two members or?
Yeah.
So any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Rich, you have stated that you are interested. Is anyone else interested in serving this? Subcommittee?
I'm interested, but I just, I have four now. I'm on four.
Well, I was kind of curious about it, so.
Want to wait until after the election?
Um, I was just going to say that seeing how it's a contested race now. It's not a shoe-in anymore.
I would like to at some point, but I'm just trying to balance.
I mean, you've got, you've, you've all got.
Well, are we going to start? We didn't say when to establish it.
Before it makes up committees.
Are we establishing it now or immediate? We didn't, I didn't say that in the motion.
You want to establish it for the next year?
We just said to establish it, but I do.
We can organize it as part of the organization meeting.
That's what I was going to suggest, in May, yeah.
I would, I think we could.
After the.
Leave it open at this point.
I'd leave it open, yeah.
That's, you know what? That's the perfect.
See how little experience we have on the committee at that point. Rich and Diana, you could be tied for second in seniority.
Do you want to take the varsity baseball team?
Sure.
For Mr. Johnson then?
So I think this has become an annual event. This is not anything unlike you've seen before. The baseball, varsity baseball team from the high school is looking to travel on May 18th and May 19th to Cooperstown, New York. Chaperones are, are listed for you as coaches of the team. And they will be accompanying the students for an overnight trip. And so it needs a, it needs a vote of the, of the committee.
So I think we already paid the bill, didn't we? Some of the bill for that?
You did.
Better prove it.
Thank you for paying attention.
And to clarify.
I tell them to get me these memos. We know we're going to do it every year. It's like, just give me the memos in the winter.
And to clarify, we're traveling to Cooperstown, New York to play Bedford, Massachusetts.
That's correct.
But it's at the great field at the Hall of Fame.
Just clarifying.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the trip, to approve the trip.
I move to accept the varsity baseball team's trip to Cooperstown, New York.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So special education?
Yes, I was just waiting.
Between the two of us.
In your packet was a kind of a draft sort of presentation that was presented and shared at the finance planning team meeting at the, at the last meeting on March 4th, I believe. And essentially, what we are looking to do, this was actually, you know, brought to Summit Lieutenant Bernard and myself by Michael Prisco. And I know the select board already had a conversation with it at their last meeting. I believe they're going to talk about it again this evening. But we kind of feel this as being sort of good fiscal practice to move forward, take advantage of some new legislation that was enacted in fiscal year 17, which provides a little bit more flexibility than the traditional stabilization fund. So by instituting a special education reserve fund, we would essentially be able to, you know, put some funds aside in the sense of that, that unexpected cost that we all know how variable and how volatile the costs of, you know, special education can be, whether it be in out-of-district tuition, transportation costs, or just an unexpected cost that may incur in, in the fiscal year. The stabilization fund, the main difference between the two, the stabilization fund requires town meeting action. So if something were to incur mid-year in the fall after the fiscal year is adopted, after the fall town meeting, for instance, which is more than likely would be the case. We would need to kind of wait for that June town meeting. Then we're kind of freezing funds. We're stopping everything. You know, we're, we're dealing with a much more of a, a more of an urgent situation. Whereas enacting this, this fund and taking advantage of the new, the new law would only allow, would allow us to access, you know, funds in, you know, that would be set aside in the reserve fund by a vote of the select board in the school committee. So we could act much further and, and address the need that may arise that, that would be unexpected, against unexpected costs. So I believe it had the support of the finance planning team, had the support certainly through the select board. Some of the requirements are referenced in the fund on page two of the handout. You know, we're essentially looking at Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 13E. The fund balance cannot exceed 2% of our annual net school spending, which would be approximately $550,000 if you looked at our net school spending amount for fiscal '20. So we do, you know, see this as a necessary step. I think we're looking at support from the school committee, the, the select board, as well as an endorsement through the finance committee eventually. We, we hope that would be achieved in time for the June 10th meeting to endorse a, an article that would set some funds aside in, into this fund. Questions?
So I think, Megan, I'm in favor of it. I think a couple of things to add. Number one, well, the big question is going to be where does the funding come from? But we have to, we have to at least establish it first. Whether it gets funded or how it gets funded is going to be in our discussion later on. But I think there's a couple of other important points to this. Number one, there's privacy concerns I worry about. Like, have you ever had a call town meeting? have you ever had a call town meeting because a student moved into district that had, had major needs? It's going to get out about who that family is and they're going to be discussed. And I just, I don't think that's appropriate.
I wouldn't do it to me.
No, no, if, if we didn't do it this way.
Oh.
If we didn't do it this way and we had to go to town meeting to try to get additional funds, it could come out. One placement, we have placements that are three, $400,000 right now. And so one placement like that can just bust a budget. And then the other part is with the potential building in North Reading, you know, of, of, of new, you know, of new community, that right there could have a huge impact in one, in one fiscal year. So I think it's, it's really important that we think about establishing this, but also think about funding it, because, you know, there could be a large number of, you know, a, a large change to our special education fund or, or budget in just one year.
And we're, how, what would the funding mechanism be? Would it be a, a, a line item in the, in the town budget, or?
In, in the finance planning team meeting, we have pushed back a couple of times, that we're not talking about just taking it out of, out of the school budget, correct? And we've been told, correct.
Right, I mean.
This would be taking other funds, just like we put.
Come from some other source.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you where a good, a good source of income is free cash.
Yeah, that's
Every year.
I, I get the sense that that's
Yeah. I mean, Michael Prisco was pretty clear that they're not looking for us to do anything different.
Because even if you take it off the top, right, that still affects the school budget.
Still affects, yeah, exactly.
64% of it is, so I, I think free cash, and, and, you know, this year they had a huge amount of free cash. And, and I think free cash is a, a good source for this funding.
You wouldn't even need to fund it necessarily. You could do it over a couple of years.
Yeah.
Right. That would be the idea.
Oh, I think that was, I think the plan was to, yeah, build over a series of years.
Yeah, yeah.
And just another point not to be lost is I think that the, the select board was looking, they were looking to co, have this as a cosponsored article in the town meeting warrant, so.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
And we've never funded the
No.
The current account has no money in it.
That's right.
Because basically, we said, it doesn't make sense because of the whole process, as Michael mentioned, going on.
From the, from the, from the finance planning team point of view, I think the time is ripe for this.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the, the planets have collided in a good way.
Yeah.
You know, to, to have things, I guess the stars align is probably a better way to say, right, that, um.
I mean, by statute, by statute, we still would, it would be our, our vote and the select board vote.
Majority vote of both boards, correct.
Yeah.
Still a lot easier than going to town meeting to
Correct.
get it.
So what exactly is the motion that we need tonight? Is it to form that we approved? Yeah, so what is, what are we thinking?
I think, I think the appropriate motion would be to endorse the concept and, and, and sign on as a cosponsor, as a town meeting warrant article, for the, for the annual town meeting warrant on, on June 10th. I think that's, that's
So we would move to cosponsor a warrant article regarding the establishment of the special education reserve fund.
Yep. I think you're great. Just made the motion. Sounds good to me.
Are you accepting motion?
I am.
Then I will, I will move to
Cosponsor with the select board?
Cosponsor with the select board, the, a warrant article on, in the June town meeting for the establishment of the special education reserve fund.
Correct.
Second.
All right. Perfect. Glad this happened. Thank you for your hard work. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that's a good job on
Excellent.
Long time in the coming. I had a question.
Yes.
The town old land, we don't need to bring that from the old meeting?
The dead, the deadline has, yeah. And I, so I took the liberty of suggesting to Mr. Gilberto that I did not anticipate that the town, that the school committee would have an interest in those parcels.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. And then the town war, warrant articles as well?
Correct. Today was the deadline, at four o'clock.
Yeah, we, we don't have any, right.
But, um, again.
Except for this one.
That's right. So that's why I think the select board brought it up at their meeting prior, because he knew that the, the committee was not meeting because of the snow day.
I just wanted to make sure about that.
Thank you.
Okay. And so next we have, Mr. Conley, would you like to brief us on the before school?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this evening, we have before you a memorandum that discusses our before-school childcare rates. And we are recommending a small increase to the monthly rates in the before-school childcare program for the 2019-20 school year. We did have an increase two years ago in, in the start of the 2017-18 school year. You may recall, at that time, we did discuss keeping the rates the same for two years and then revisiting an increase for the 2019-20 school year, which is what we are doing now. Our, our rates, you know, have, we've been able to keep our rates very low, below market value and below what our comparable and peer districts charge for before-school and even after-school childcare, which we feel, we'd like to continue to be able to offer that to keep costs. We've been able to keep the costs very low and been able to offer very convenient and affordable pricing to families. However, we do have costs that go up. You know, the staff that are employed to work within the before-school program, you know, their rates tend to go up between 1.5 and, and 2% annually. So we are looking to make another minor adjustment to the monthly rates to ensure we will continue to cover our costs. We're hopeful this will be an adjustment that will then remain for, you know, two or three years. We'll revisit it kind of on a, you know, two or three-year cycle. But, you know, we, we do see this as kind of a necessary adjustment to just keep, keep up with our, our costs in the program. And we are glad that we are still, even despite the increase, as you can see by some of the information that was shared, below, below our
Below.
This is the bargain of the century. And I'm glad we can keep it low, but this is incredible.
Yeah.
How, how little we charge, especially looking at the other districts. This is unbelievable.
I mean, I, I also think it's irrelevant what the other districts charge. I think it should, I think the fee should cover what the cost is.
No, right, but I'm, I'm saying
No, I know. It's, it's great that it is low.
I don't think it's irrelevant, because it's good to point to something and say, look, we're really, we're providing you with a service at a really affordable level.
But you also have to not, not provide an opening for someone to say, well, why don't we just charge more so, so we're
Right.
So we can, because we're so low.
Right.
So I think it's mostly about, it's about covering the costs.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you just outline the rates?
Yes, I, I can go through that. So the rates that are, that are being recommended for, for five days would go from $85 to $92, which is an average cost per day of a little over, you know, about $4.60. The rate for four days was, which is currently $70, the recommendation is to go to $78. The rate for three day, a three day would go from $57 a month to $62 a month. The rate for two days per week would go from $40 a month to $44 a month. And the rate for one day a week would go from $20 a month to $24 a month.
Thank you.
So I mean, we like put, I believe there's recommended motion at the, on page two of the memo.
Before we get a motion, I, since we're, I think our after, our after-meeting plans have been dashed, so we have all night to be here. Why don't we, or have we ever, or is it not reasonable for us to offer the same service after school?
Well, it's a good, it's a good question.
We've explored that.
We've explored it.
Because I hear a lot of, if there's one area, there's several, a few areas I always get complaints on. One is we don't have free full-day K. The other one is the after-school programs are expensive. That the Y
YMCA.
Yeah.
We have explored that.
And it's hard to get into them also, yes.
Waiting lists.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
Well, doesn't that off, offer up an opportunity that we can work into some other discussions we might be having?
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've certainly talked about it in the past.
We have. Pretty, pretty seriously.
But those are longer hours after school
Correct.
in cases, right? Sometimes kids are there three, four hours, right?
Yeah, I would've said six.
I believe it's like, it's essentially, it's close, pretty close to 2:30 to 6:30.
Oh, really?
If you're going to match the, what the Y offers, I think it's got to be till, like a six o'clock pickup, yeah.
But it just seems we can
Maybe go early to 6:30.
I mean, I know it adds a lot of administrative hassle to Michael, especially
Well, I don't, I don't know. It depends on how it's structured.
Yeah.
You would need, you would need a coordinator.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, you hire a coordinator, certainly, and
And I think it's something the community would welcome if it, if it made sense. I, I, I don't know.
No, I think it's worth continuing to revisit and explore and
I saw Patrick's hand go up when you said you needed a coordinator.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's what he was responding to, but
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No.
I've seen it be very successful, you know, when I was in Lakefield.
Maybe, maybe a year and a half ago was our last really serious back at it, something like that.
Yeah, we talked about it as an administrative team. I think the principals sort of like how it's going currently, but doesn't mean that it's not, you know
I think that's largely due to because it's what they know.
It's what they, yeah.
But I think, I think, I think the, the right program format could be enticing. It's just
So who staffs the, do we hire people to staff the morning, or do teachers come in and get paid stipends to do?
We, we hire, we, we hire people to staff the morning. It's ma, it's mainly our existing staff.
Right.
But we, they do
It could be paras.
Exactly. That's right.
Discoordinators that help us organize.
So you might have a harder time finding paras that want to stay around for four hours in the afternoon after a
I don't know.
Six-hour workday, but it could be worth looking.
Depends on how lucrative it could be, you know, for somebody.
Yeah.
Has to be, it has to be enticing enough to
They wouldn't want to do it every day, but maybe one parrot does it two days.
Exactly. Right.
So the, the past, like, three or four districts I've been in do it in-house. And a lot of times, it's the paras that want the extra time after school. The high school kids can come and work. There's typically like one kind of main coordinator district-wide, and then there's a building-based coordinator. But I think it's, I mean, it definitely offers a cheaper alternative for, for families.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry.
No, it's a good question. I think it's definitely worthy of some exploration, research.
All right. So on page two, there is a motion if someone would like to bring it forward.
I'll move that the school committee vote to approve the before-school childcare rate increases for the 2019 to 2020 school year as recommended by the administration.
Second.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Conley.
Thank you.
All right. The revised school committee meeting schedule.
I don't care.
Wait, wait.
You accept it.
I, I approve.
Mel, how long do we have you? When, when does your timer run out? At midnight?
Yes. We may have, I may not be able to finish this meeting if we don't hurry up here.
All right. So we've pretty much done everything up until today. On your budget thing, did you say that we were given to the finance
Oh, yes.
On April 10th?
April 10th is when they've requested us to present, which we, a little bit earlier than what it's been in the past.
Okay.
We feel like we could accommodate that.
But these three dates then are still viable?
I think they're okay.
They are, yeah. Just Mike, the, the three o'clock start time is the correct time for what you have on this schedule.
Okay.
The changes were made to June. So the previous schedule, you had, had, it had, it had a blank for the June town meeting date.
Right.
It was developed in August because there was talk of moving that date. So now that it's been set for June 10th, that had been a school committee meeting date, and June 24th was a school committee meeting date. So the, the change that you have in front of you tonight reflects a school committee meeting now on June 3rd and one on June 17.
That's it. I'm glad a guy my age wouldn't be able to make that kind of schedule three straight weeks. That's tough. Wow.
All right.
Leave it to the young ones.
Yep.
Six.
You youngins can handle this.
I will entertain a motion to accept the revised school committee meeting schedule.
I will move to accept the revised school committee meeting schedule as presented by the administration.
I'll second that.
Well, thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
More meetings, says Mel.
Yep.
I need to Okay. Yes. Rich, would you like to?
I'm lost.
Take that one on. It should be
Electronic version. Is there an electronic version, Janine, that can be mailed to us?
Huh?
Is there an electronic version that can be mailed to us to fill out?
I don't know. I, I did.
We did electronically.
Yeah, I think
You mailed it when?
I emailed it.
Was it in that email? I was looking at that email. I didn't see the attachment.
I don't think I thought.
I filled mine out by pen.
I may, I thought I did.
Did you?
I can, I said it was a while ago.
Did you send?
And I was just looking back at that email today and, but anyway, that can be, we can
I can do it tomorrow. I thought I did. I know I sent an email about it.
Maybe you did. Thought you did. I don't know.
We'll be on the, check my emails, so.
So we're, so we're clear on, on the time, the timeline, which is the responses come back on April 8th?
Can you forward it?
Well, that's coming right up, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, my.
I said that, I sent that to the committee on March 7th.
You did, and it included the attachment?
It did.
Okay.
I'm looking at it right now.
Probably my phone wasn't looking at the right one. So it's this, it's this tool here, right?
Yep.
So I don't know what we need to talk about.
If you want to electronically submit it to Rich, right?
Yeah.
Because you're, you're doing all of those, and then I'll do the
And you're doing the superintendent one.
Or if you like to do it old-school, pen and paper, then you just need to get it to him by the
I charge extra for that, though.
You, you won't be able to read my handwriting.
Exactly. So, yeah, you can, you can electronically, you can send them to, you know, my school email.
Rich, can I just make a suggestion?
Are we evaluating ourselves with or without?
If you do it electronically, save it as a PDF.
Yes.
And then send it, because I had difficulty last year reading them.
Yes, the formatting, yeah.
So we should save it as a PDF and send a PDF to
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I had the problems in the past without, yeah, with that, same thing.
And are we evaluating ourselves as with Mel or without Mel?
Well, without me, you'll obviously be much better and much more efficient.
The committee acts as a whole, so it doesn't really matter.
That's true.
You said you sent it on March 7th?
Yes.
I can forward it to you again if that helps.
It's a different title, that's
Yeah, because I only have one from you on March 7th.
It was a very lengthy email.
It was a, many
It was in that long one.
I'll forward it to you right now, Janine.
Okay.
If anyone else would like it, please let me know. If anyone else would like it, please let me know.
What did, all right, anyway, I, I guess I'll patch it again.
The subject line was a few updates.
Oh, March 8th.
That's might be when the most recent reply was, when.
It was March 7th at 2:00 PM.
It's the problem with Gmail.
That's right.
And I just forwarded it to you again now.
I get to talk about Mel.
Have it fresh in your inbox.
Perfect, thank you very much.
So, uh, any other questions about the committee evaluation process?
The only, the only thing I would add, Madam Chairman, if I could, is that, that, that evaluation subcommittee meeting, the second one, the, what, what here is showing is April 11th was always, sometimes the, the committee used that time to come into the conference room and compile. Other times people did it on, on their own at home. So if you don't need to meet, there wouldn't be an evaluation subcommittee meeting. But if you want to block out that time with, with Janine and me at the office, you, you can do that. It's, it happens to be however you choose to do it. And I can certainly be there to help you if that's useful.
Can we, sir, can I think about that?
You can absolutely let me know. Yep, you can let me know the, the day of.
Let's sort of get my mind around it.
Yeah, yeah. And if you'd like me, I can be there to help, you know, just type in or however you want me, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so then on April 8th is when we hand out yours.
So April 8th, I will, I will have a packet for you, correct?
And then I need it back by the 29th?
Correct.
For the May 13th. Anything else on that? No. Okay, for routine matters, we have two minutes, January 7th and January 28th, open session.
I move to approve January 7th, 2019 meeting, meeting, open meeting minutes as written.
Second.
Any questions concerned or updates? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. And the 28th?
I move to approve the January 28th, 2019, open meeting minutes as written.
Second.
It wasn't there.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. For.
Yes.
The budget update?
So, uh, in your packet this evening was the budget update. Uh, essentially reflects activity through the month of February and as is our practice, it shows expense activity and payroll activity. We have been able to handle all, you know, costs associated with sort of the winter season, um, as we, as the winter season hopefully comes to a close in the coming weeks. And we've been able to address costs needed for snow and ice removal. We are within, and we, to date have been able to stay within our budgeted amounts. Uh, we expect there will be a small amount of funds at the end of the year in utility accounts and our gas and electric line items. Um, you know, we'll continue to, to monitor these costs. Uh, we were also able to address unforeseen costs in special education out of district costs this year that have incurred to date, um, while staying within our budgeted amounts. Um, the food service program continues to trend at revenue and expense amounts very similar to where we were at this time last year. So we, we really hope to have strong months of, of March and May to essentially ultimately achieve a break even program at the end of the school year. On the payroll side, there's really nothing significant to report. Um, you know, most expenses are within budgeted ranges. So as we approach the final quarter of the fiscal year, April through June, I think we are in solid financial standing. As we enter, or prepared to enter the final quarter of the year. After being said, I'll entertain any questions.
Um, just. On the utilities expenses.
Yes.
Any idea of the amount of savings?
So, yeah, we, we generally encumber up to the budgeted amount and then we kind of monitor those each month as they come in. I think we'll have a small amount to kind of re, repurpose at the end of the year. You know, I think, you know, gas lines are trending very close to the, the line items, electricity. We've, we had a good last couple of months, um, so I'm hopeful we'll be in the range of about maybe, you know, 20 or $25,000 of, um, you know, savings or money to kind of reapportion.
Not budget related, but since it's a question for you, Michael, since you're up, slight tangent. It's been about a month since we had some issues, questions regarding busing issues.
Yeah.
Have, have those issues, we seem to, are we seeing improvement there? Have you been getting phone call? I mean, what, is there any status you can update us on?
So I think, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to report that there hasn't been a lot of, you know, phone calls or issues or concerns.
Okay.
Uh, you know, at least flowing into, to our office. Mr. Bernard and I did update the, the community as a follow-up to that meeting.
Last week, yeah.
Last week, particularly geared towards the bus four parents and their concerns. The, the driver of bus four has begun to drive kind of on his own and we kind of announced that and he's, you know. The, we got, we got a very good kind of summary of the, the North Reading Transportation's safety manager that was driving with him. Um, we were, we were happy to see she sort of instilled a, a higher level of sort of confidence, you know, in, in that particular driver to continue to do his job, uh, you know, on his own and do, do it well. Uh, we also made some minor tweaks, because there was some other concerns that were raised with the inconsistencies of that route, particularly bus four. So we made some minor tweaks which were communicated, um, a couple of weeks ago or so. And essentially we kind of started the bachelor run kind of earlier. In the, the little school run kind of earlier, that kind of that tier three run.
Okay.
Which we, we, believe it or not, we, we feel like it made a pretty, a pretty significant change.
The feedback has been positive. Let's say we haven't had anything negative reported. That's maybe a fair way to say.
So if I'm, if I'm looking at the report from the safety coordinator that drove on the bus for two weeks. She felt the change that was made early on in her, her, her time on that bus made a significant difference. And we feel like it allowed parents to really expect a pretty consistent pickup time, uh, anyway, in the morning. That really, we, we hope to achieve as consistently as we can.
Yeah.
Uh, the, you know, the PM is more challenging if kids aren't on the bus. High school kids in particular, if one or two doesn't take the bus because of sports. They're not going to go to a whole other side of town and get speeds up and those types of things. But the AM, we feel like we, we achieved a great level of consistency by making those changes.
Thanks.
I think the, I think the parents responded well. They were, they gave us the opportunity to enact something that actually was a, a suggestion of, of Janine. And I, and I appreciate that. And they, they allowed us to implement that and gave us a chance to make that work. And it really, it did, it did, I think, help to send up a positive message that we were looking to, you know, reevaluate things. And I, and I, and I have to give fairness and, and do attention to North Reading Transportation. I mean, Michael has, he works with them more closely than I do. And you have largely said that they have been among the best customer service people, for lack of a better way to say, that you've worked with on kind of the bus company administration.
Terminal management.
And they also, I think, recognize that they needed to do more for us and, and they have been good too. So I do think in the end, um, the recognition that people were concerned or upset, you know, or both. And the meeting that we held here in this room did go a long way to try to, um, you know, demonstrate a good faith effort for us to, to, to do a better job and to work with North Reading Transportation to make sure that that happened. Now, it's been early and I'm, you know, I don't want to make.
I just want, it's good that it's, it's good things need to be going in the right direction.
Right, I mean, we sent, you sent a summary email out midweek last week.
We did.
Was there any response to that?
There was none.
Yeah, so I mean, I think we alerted people to the fact that this was the last day that someone was going to be riding on the bus with Ron and, you know, that, so that, that was, it was, that, that was the, the sum and substance of what the email was.
Yeah, that, that meeting really did need a breakthrough and Janine's suggestion.
It did.
Came at a good time.
I think it absolutely did.
Gave an action item that everyone could have been on board with.
Your suggestion to have the safety person drive, oh great.
To have, to have a monitor.
Ride along for a two week period and we did, we held this.
Because they do, of course, they have someone monitors a new driver, but, and that period had long passed with Ron.
It had passed at that point.
It seemed like it was a good opportunity for another couple of weeks.
It was. Excellent.
So.
Thanks.
So thank you for bringing that up for us to respond to.
Kudos.
All right, um, staffing.
I did have one staffing, actually it's one staffing change that it results in kind of two things to talk about that I wanted to alert you to. So Deb Pierce in the business office, she had been Deb Flanders for, for a time before she, um, married recently. She kind of abruptly announced her retirement. She, she retired on February, she announced it on February 1st. And so, um, I think she just, you know, came to a decision, you know, that, that she could make things work and she, so she chose to retire and it was.
Yeah.
You know, she, she did a nice job for, for that office for about five years. And so, um, we've, we've posted that vacancy, we've actually filled that vacancy with Rosalie McKillop.
Oh, excellent.
Who has not started yet. She, we're, right now we're anticipating, we're in the process of, of conducting interviews. We conducted two more interviews today. The, the central office team with some folks to, well, the receptionist position. But, um, Rosalie emerged as someone that we were very interested in. She's done a nice job for us as a receptionist, so. So she, so those of you that will be coming to the central office will see Rosalie has moved now down to, next to Sabida in the, in the business office. And there might be a new face in, in the reception.
Rosalie, the one at the front desk?
Yes, she was the one at the front desk. So right now we're targeting April 1st as the, the start date for, for Rosalie to move into her new position. She's, um, working with us as we, um, as we kind of go through the interview process to fill her position. So I thought you should be aware of that, so.
Very nice.
Michael, this is a replacement?
Yes, it is. And that's, um, all I had on staffing, Madam Chairman.
All right, thank you. Um, on to bids and donations.
I've been looking forward to this one since you mentioned it, John. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a Milwaukee pipe wrench, big one, valued at $335 from an anonymous donor for the North Reading Public Schools.
65 pounds that wrench is.
I saw that.
It was in my office.
Can handle a nine inch.
Eight, eight inch, eight inch pipe, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a lot of leverage.
Brand new, brand new wrench, brand spanking new. And I, I promised the donor that if we ever found a need to use it, which I'm hoping we never do, uh, because that means that something big is, big is going on around here. It is literally as long as this table and weighs 65 pounds. I promised the donor that I would take a picture of it being used.
We'll, we'll put it in the, well.
I heard Wayne was just like giddy old.
Oh.
He'll bring it, he'll bring it next year, right?
Well, you know Wayne usually brings a toy with him.
Show and tell, right.
That's coming up in June.
He'll have two students carry it for him.
Too cute. All right, um, do I have a second on, oh, on that?
Does someone have a second?
No.
Come on, Mel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 for Mr. Jeffrey Simmons, Simons, for the North Reading Public Schools 2019 Parent University.
Second.
Very generous.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, he's wonderful.
Yep.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $681.84 from the North Reading High School boosters toward the purchase of hockey bags to support the North Reading High School hockey team.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $5,905.34 from multiple donors raised by the North Reading High School track team through their SNAP raise fundraiser to support the girls and boys track teams at the high school.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's the total of that so far? It seems like we had that every time.
What?
Is it all different ones or is it?
Well, it's all various teams.
It's like, like a GoFundMe.
It's a GoFundMe.
I know, but I don't know how many, like, total's got to be huge.
Yeah, we've done, a lot of teams have done that, baseballs.
And there's more coming, so.
Yeah.
Baseballs was really big when they did it.
Yeah. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a, a donation of $200 from Barbara and James Thorstedt toward the purchase of soccer goalie uniforms to support the North Reading High School girls varsity and junior varsity soccer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We reorganize, I, I want to continue to do.
You should be appointed the donation reader committee.
You've got it down, Pat.
You, you are really good at it.
Good flow.
Okay, subcommittee updates, Mr. Webster and Ms. Boutwell.
Honestly, there was not much that went on at that.
There wasn't.
Last committee meeting. We talked about, uh, the budget, which is really tight.
Yeah.
Um, we're not going to have very much left.
About the goose treatment.
We talked about geese.
The goose treatment.
Which Eric Arshenbo was texting me during the meeting tonight because he doesn't know that I'm in this meeting, but he's letting me know that it may be Wednesday, but he'll confirm that tomorrow morning, so.
And there's.
We talked, the only other thing I have.
Geese get an upset stomach.
Okay.
Do you remember about the golf cart too?
Oh yeah, we talked about the golf cart.
I do, there.
Hillview has offered us a, a very good price on a new electric golf cart, correct?
Well, it could, it could, no, I would say that's absolutely true, but it could even be a better deal. So I met with Chuck Karucci on Friday and, um, he, um, shared some, some progress. And he was hoping to have more information for us to consider about his ability to possibly parlay that into an offer of two.
Oh.
So we have two right now.
Only we could make it like a, 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 what do they call the iRobot, the Roomba?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where it goes on its own, just kind of circles around.
Then we could use that to chase the geese.
Yeah.
So that was a bit of an update. Um, tennis courts were prepped and ready for spring sports today. We got the numbers on the spring sport enrollments, but those, you know, were very preliminary, so.
Yeah.
Dave Johnson did indicate to me last week that things were good.
We also spoke briefly about, um, we are starting to see some savings from using the new, um, multi.
Multi function vehicle, that's correct.
We used it for some sports and in the spring we can use it for tennis.
Yep.
I don't know, maybe JV baseball.
It was a pretty light meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Robin Foreman is retiring.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, she's been a mainstay in the.
Department, yes, she will be a loss.
Dave Johnson is losing his right arm, his right leg and the right side of his brain with her leaving.
She's been good.
She's been excellent.
Excellent, she's been a great employee.
From being in the office to staffing events and making sure events are staffed.
Very good face of that department down there with dealing with all the registrations.
She'll definitely be missed.
She's been good.
Yeah, that's about it.
Mr., I was guessing Mr. Boutwell and Ms. Boutwell. The policy subcommittee, would you like to update us?
I don't know, we did much, do I know?
What was the section number, do you recall?
We are through section.
Is it E or?
E.
E, yeah.
Correct.
Each time we literally fire through a section, so we got through section E.
Yep.
It might come to an abrupt halt soon, though some of the sections coming up are a little more heady. G gets personnel, gets heady, but.
We've been making some progress though.
You have been making good progress.
And I would just say, just generally, maybe for next year as we start to, as it starts the process again, presumably or perhaps with two new members or one new member and, and that. Look for some of that cross.
Yes.
Section stuff to make sure there's consistencies across sections, because we see a lot of.
Yeah, what was the term? It was about.
It was the emergency plan and has referred five, ten different ways in different sections, so. But anyway, we are making a lot of good progress. It's very, very useful for us, for me anyway, um, to get a handle on it all.
Agreed. Um, I was actually looking at the handbook and the policies online. And when you do the changes, do you leave the tracks in there?
No.
There was one that had it in there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, if you can identify that.
Looking at the policy handbook?
Yeah.
Online?
Yeah.
Are you becoming Mel?
No. Um, and the other thing.
She's not going to tell you which one, you're going to find it yourself.
If you can, I'll task Ann with that.
I'll let you know.
Yeah, if you would, sure.
In the handbook, you know how it says, you know, superintendents, his or her designee or principal, his or her designee? There's not a consistency in the handbook in regards to that, it's a his designee.
Handbook or policy manual?
Handbook.
Handbook, okay.
The policy I think you are catching.
Okay.
Along the way. But.
Yeah, if we have, right, there was something.
Just in time for, then we're going to have to switch them all to there, but.
Right, his or her there.
Well, I just happened to notice it in the handbook, it said principal or his designee.
Gotcha.
One of my pet peeves. Okay, uh, Mr. Buckley.
Uh, I wasn't going to be at that meeting and then I think it got canceled anyways, so. I went to, I had a C, I went to the CPAC emergency preparedness one though, and that was a good presentation, a good discussion, so.
Okay.
That's my update on CPAC.
Okay. Um, the financial planning team, March 1st, um, I don't think you were able to make it, right?
I was gone that weekend.
Um, there was some more discussion on, I'm going to call it the fluid organic, um, paper of what the FinCon is.
A description of what the finance planning team is.
Did you hand it out?
I do have that, did I give it to you? For you?
Pass.
Okay, you'll pass. When, I guess it was first introduced, I'm one of those who are like, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, why are we doing this? You're putting it down on paper, blah, blah, blah. But it actually, um, I think, in the future, it will help those who step onto the board and find themselves in the chair, vice chair position. They've done a lot of work on it, taken a lot of, um, comments and suggestions from us. Uh, it's generally known as the school versus the town, but then that's not right because the school is part of the town. So then they designated it the municipal side versus the school side and then it all falls under the town. And it, it breaks down descriptions and, and where the revenue comes from and where the things come off the top. And from a layperson, you know, I'm not a CPA or budget person at all. So this, I think, was a, a good help to me, even having been, um, under Mel's tutelage. Sometimes they talk and I don't want to say anything because it just goes so fast and it's over my head. So I thought this was pretty good. I don't know if you guys had a chance to see it or anything or.
I don't know any specific comments, but I thought in general it seemed like a really good effort and I, I certainly will appreciate it.
I think it's a good idea to get it on paper.
Yeah.
Did you want to add anything, Mr. Buckley? Um, there really wasn't much more movement in the way of the budget revenues talks and stuff. Um, they did do, um, the, the budget showing how they've done it in the past versus how they want to break it out in the future with taking the trash out and how to accommodate it, so the school is not held.
We gotta get going, because I do, we do have to take the trash out tonight, so.
Well, that's right, yeah, yeah. Um, so it was, you know, not.
I think, I think the 25th meeting will hopefully be, you know, kind of, a little bit more fine tuned in terms of what revenues are.
They discussed the, um, at the last selectmen's meeting, when we didn't meet, they discussed the whole changing how.
Mm-hmm.
Expenses are allocated.
Yeah.
And based on that meeting, it doesn't seem like the school department is gonna be hurt at all. The percentages barely shifted, so if that's the case.
Actually, there was a gain, I think, but.
There was a really tiny gain.
Right, a small percentage, but they're.
Like 0.2% or something.
It's been pretty clearly and regularly articulated that the goal is that the.
Not to harm the school.
That the school department would not lose in that, in that one.
Because it's obvious, we're gonna have higher healthcare expense costs, because we have 400 employees.
Or employees, yeah.
300 employees, so it's.
There is, there has been a pretty strong commitment to recognizing that.
And honestly, last year, there was a big change made when they increased the town fee, and a portion of it didn't go to the schools. That was another piece of that. Remember last year, like, there was a certain amount of the, of the trash free?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That got divided, and then there was another, there was an increase that was not divided between the school and the town.
Right.
And the municipal department. So.
Okay. Um, Diane, did you meet with the CIPC? It wasn't on the initial one, but.
Um, we don't usually talk about the CIPC here.
Uh, it hasn't been traditionally updated, it just, not for any reason, but it just, it's never been one we've.
I just learned that lesson the last time I went to speak about it, and I was like, nope.
I can include an update on there, but I think Michael, Michael typically provides his update when you do a presentation, but if you'd like to, we can certainly do that.
What's the timeline, that would be the only question I would have.
Next week, isn't it?
Well, the meeting got canceled last minute, so March 25th, I believe, is the one we'll get the ranking.
Yeah.
Official, where we stand.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
And John, I'm not, I'm not getting a lot of warm and fuzzies on the scoreboard dugout project.
Oh, right.
Yeah. So, I hope, I hope some minds can be changed there, but.
Okay.
I'm getting some feedback that that's not gonna get a high.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't seen the committee's rankings yet, we submitted them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and I can understand that, we already have, what, five other things in there, so that may not rise to the top of our list.
Do you all just rank them yourself, and then?
Yeah, then they, they kind of compile.
They're ranked.
So. Okay.
Um, did you want to add anything, Rich, about the school start time?
Yeah, I'll just say real quickly that, you know, we've made a lot of progress. Uh, as you, as I mentioned, we're gonna be looking at some of that data from that survey. Uh, we've also drafted a survey and sent it out to districts around us, and, and actually, a broad selection of districts, sort of, surveying if they are having these discussions, or where they are in the process, or how it went, if they went through the process and made a decision one way or the other. So, we've got a lot of feedback from that, that we'll, we'll be sorting through. Just looking ahead, um, we will be participating in the parent university.
Oh, great.
Um, just basically having a booth there, and, and, you know, we're nowhere near, uh, ready to articulate a proposal, but just to provide, you know, some information on the, the science behind the, the sleep studies that we've seen, and, and, and all of that. And then, we are looking ahead to the end of this year, of the school year, uh, making a proposal of our progress, or, or a presentation of our progress to the school committee. I just want to let you guys know about that, so.
Great.
It'll be coming down the pike, um, in May or June. Is that, anything else I should have mentioned, Patrick?
I think that's all. I mean, we've evaporated Michael to check in with us, who was uncomfortable.
Oh, that, that'll put a kibosh in the whole thing.
This is what I look forward to following, Rich, I really, I really appreciate you taking the lead on this, because it's.
Michael's gonna get a complex.
Been close to my heart, so, good on you. Yeah, Michael, don't you, don't you, don't you shut this down, Michael?
I oldest gets to middle school in, in a year and a couple, a few months, so. I don't want to get up a second.
Well, we'll see. That's all.
All right. Um, so, some committee schedules, the substance abuse coalition meets tomorrow at 10:00 AM in the police station. The finance planning team meets March 25th at 1:00 PM in the superintendent's conference room. The CIPC meets March 25th at 4:30, Town Hall, Room 5. The policy subcommittee meets March 27th at 4:00 PM at the superintendent's conference room. The NORCAM Board of Directors meets March 28th at 7:00 PM at the NORCAM office.
21st now, just got changed.
March 21st?
It was a change.
It was a change. Couldn't make it.
So, that's what, Thursday?
Yeah, it's Thursday. I won't be at.
The athletics subcommittee meets April 9th at 12:30 in the superintendent's conference room. And that brings us to the administrative report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, so I should, you should have, um, did I give you ladies a copy? I'm sorry, I have them here for you. Um, I did leave a report for each of you. Um, do you mind, Michael, giving one to Joe and Cindy? Thank you. Um, so a couple of things to share with you, the first is, and you'll see in my supplemental report, that this was identified as, um, committee goal for, under the educational program number 38, which was to, um, to explore the need for a freshman, expansion of the freshman advisory program at the high school. So, I had met with the, um, with the principal, Mr. Lepret, going back, mm, a little while ago, anyway, and, um, he, um, administered a survey that he had created, which I think was, was pretty comprehensive in its, in its goal to gather input from the students about their connectedness to their school, and you'll see that the label of the survey was to measure connectedness in student support at North Reading High School. So, just by way of background, and I'm actually gonna talk about the accreditation in just a moment, um, as one of my other items for you, but, um, when the, when the high school was accred, last accredited in, um, 2014, the idea of a freshman advisory program was kind of percolating out among all schools that the New England Association of Schools and Colleges was, um, was seeking to accredit at that time, and, and kind of one of, one of the blanket recommendations that was coming out of NEASK, um, at the time, was about freshman advisory programs. Um, and so, we had, we had adhered to that recommendation and developed a plan to create an advisor, advisee program for the freshman class, but there had been, over the years now, since, since that time, there had been interest expressed, and the school committee has, as one of its goals, to, um, to look to whether or not expanding that program into the upper grades, grades 10, 11, and 12 might be something, um, worth exploring. It's my opinion, and it would be my recommendation, that the data from the survey does not, um, does not speak to that. I mean, in, you know, it might be an ideal thing to have, but I'm not so sure that, um, that the data from the survey suggests that there's a direction to go, and that would, that would broaden that to grades 10, 11, and 12. So, I wanted to follow up with you on that. The second item I have in my packet is a timeline for, and again, I'm sorry, this is coming to you a little bit late in the, in that, um, the announcement of the finalist candidates for the assistant principal's job at the high school are due to be announced tomorrow, um, but I had planned to share this with you at the last meeting, but was canceled due to the snow, but, um, I thought it was important for you to see, um, the timeline that the high school had been undertaking to, to find a, a permanent replacement for, um, an assistant principal at the high school. So, as I said, and I'm anticipating, and I'm speaking with Mr. Lepret today, that finalist candidates, um, are likely to be announced tomorrow, and there's some, some opportunity one more time for parents to come in and, and meet the candidates on, on Wednesday, I believe, an email went out to that effect. So, we're looking at, um, a selected candidate coming, you know, very, very soon, with a start date of July. The third thing I wanted to share with you was, um, the five-year report that is, that is one of the obligations of the, of the district to maintain its accreditation of its high school. So, um, this, this report that you have, again, it's for informational purposes only, um, at this time speaks to the recommendations that had come out of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. So, typically what happens is there's a six-month report filed, a two-year report filed, a five-year report filed, which is what this one is, and in about a year and a half to two years, um, the, the, the high school will undertake, um, the process to, um, host a, an accreditation site visit in the year 2024. And then the last thing I have to share with you is, um, is, is again, in the way of good news, um, I have, um, two letters, one, uh, they're very similar letters, but one was to, uh, Mr. Colleen at the Batch Elder School, and one was to, uh, Mrs. Molly at the, at the Little School, and I did speak with you about this information earlier in the year, but I have since received invitations for representatives of both schools to, um, attend a ceremony, um, at the State House on June 7th to be, um, recognized among the 57 schools that are either, um, schools of recognition, national blue ribbon schools, or ESEA distinguished schools. Um, and I can tell you that the district will be, will be well represented, um, at that ceremony. You remember, remember a couple of years ago, the Batch Elder School had gotten something similar.
Little School is both, right?
Little School is, is, is gonna be a blue ribbon.
Oh, they're not a blue ribbon yet.
Correct, they're in the nomination, um, process. And just very quickly, I can tell you, in fact, Mrs. Embriano, I'm gonna be reaching out to you for a signature on the application, you might recall from previous discussions around the, the Little School's nomination as a blue ribbon school. We have an application to submit by March 29th. Mrs. Molly is anticipating completing that application tomorrow. So, we will be submitting that well in advance of the March 29th deadline, but it does need a signature from, from the school committee chairman and from me. So, I'll share that document with you, Janine, to review before you are asked to sign off on anything. Um, and that's all I had, Madam Chairman.
All right.
Congrats to those schools.
Yeah, yeah, it's good news, thank you.
Okay, for future business, we have a, uh, 2020 budget workshop on April 11th, or, sorry, April 3rd, which is a Wednesday at 3:00 PM. On April 8th, there's a budget public hearing here in the Distance Learning Lab at 6:30. On April 24th, which is also a Wednesday, if necessary, there will be another budget workshop at the superintendent's conference room at 3:00, and on April 29th, a regular meeting here at 6:30. And before I ask to adjourn, I just want to say thank you very, very much for everything that you've done.
Come on.
Heard enough of this stuff.
Yeah, I know, but you need to hear it from us, so.
Yeah.
Anyone?
Absolutely. You know, as someone who's been sort of following this stuff for a while, I'm not, like, I was, before I joined the committee, I wasn't a, uh, I didn't attend a ton of meetings, but your presence was very well, very obvious to all of us, and, and is what, greatly appreciated. I learned a lot in the year I'm here, and to see your knowledge constantly in play for this year has been impressive, and.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, as a parent that migrated to North Reading just a few years ago, I came for the schools.
Excellent.
And I know you've been a big part of that, so thank you, as a parent and resident of North Reading. Um, as a school committee member, I wish I had more time with you, um, because I think I could continue to learn a lot. So, I want you to know that you're not off the hook, because I intend to reach out to you.
I'll be back. I'll be back. I'm not go, I'm not, rumors of my demise have been greatly exaggerated, or something to that.
We have your email address.
Yes, exactly, right. I appreciate it.
I intend on, uh, pinging you from time to time.
Excellent.
The, the past, you know, little less than a year has been great to work with you.
Thank you.
I would, I would say I would call you, but you have never given me your number, I don't think.
There's a reason for that, Scott.
I think, I mean, I, before I joined the school committee, I mean, you were the school committee to me, you were, you, and then I met Jerry as well, and again, you, I, I remember going to the North Reading United for Education meetings, and you were just, again, you were impressive. You were, you were, you made me feel stupid, because you knew so much about things. You were so passionate about what you did, and again, sometimes I try to provoke the passion a little bit, and I said, I used an analogy about you to somebody the other day, and said that most people, when there's a lightning storm, they, they hide and, you know, seek shelter, you know, and if there's controversy going on, a lot of people do the same thing. You're out there with a big metal pole.
Exactly.
Trying to attract the attention, and it's, it's been necessary, you know, and it'll be very hard to, you know, to replace that. Your knowledge is just superior to, you know, most, most people, period. Um, for some reason, my son worships you.
I, I love the fact that your son, who is a mini you, worships me, that makes me beyond happy.
He'll be like, he'll literally be like, you're going to school, you'll see Mr. Webster tonight, won't you?
Every time we see him at a restaurant, it's Mr. Webster.
You'll see Mr. Webster tonight, and what I will say is, I mean, again, I think you're, you're gonna be well-known for, remembered for things like the school, and you'll be remembered for, I mean, I'll always remember you for really focusing on the funding, like.
Don't forget the bathrooms, I'll be well-remembered for the.
Well, that's. That's a perfect, that's a perfect setup.
Awful.
I actually got a little present for you. So, I just thought you deserved a trophy. So, it says, Mel Webster, creator of the Webster washrooms.
Oh, thank you so much, Scott, I appreciate it.
Lovely.
Oh, my God, this is, this is beyond my wildest dreams.
Mike.
And Scott, I do want to thank you for the kind words that you, uh, you wrote in the transcript.
You're very welcome.
And also Carl Nelson wrote a very nice letter.
Yeah.
Which was much appreciated, given that Carl and I worked, we worked together for many years, uh, before Michael came in. So, I really appreciate, appreciate that.
Very welcome.
Very good. Well, Mel, I just wanted to say, it's been an absolute pleasure, you know, working with you for the last, you know, six years.
I didn't bug you too much, though, did I?
No, no, I mean, it was those times, but honestly, I always knew that going into a budget meeting with you, a subcommittee meeting, athletic meeting, whatever it was, I completely had to be kind of on my A-game and, and have my data and my research, um, because you certainly would always ask the, you know, the tough, the tough question, and, and, um, I was always amazed at how quickly you kind of understood and grasped everything and that was being presented from a budget and a financial perspective, and you really, to me, always understood kind of the big picture. You know, you very quickly, you know, got it and understood it, and I always kind of appreciated that. And, you know, I was just so impressed at how tirelessly you, you worked to advocate, um, you know, on behalf of, you know, North Reading and its students, and to me, you always had the, uh, the best interests of the students at heart, you know, and everything that you were advocating for, um, whether it be for, you know, more funds for the budget or everything that you were trying to do. I knew you were always looking at what would have the greatest impact on students and their, their education, so. Um, definitely will miss working with you, I wish you the, the best of luck with your future endeavors, and it's been, it's been a pleasure.
You gotta find someone, have we designated the payroll signee? Is it Janine?
We talked about that the other day, actually, yeah.
I've been doing that for many years, so people gotta get paid.
Yeah.
And people in the, people, I know I've talked to some folks in the office that you've been working with, Sabita, Steve.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss it, I'm gonna miss it.
They're gonna miss you.
Great people. My, I just want to say that, you know, Jerry and I were blown away, what, we used to, we used to almost, we used to get together and say, "Let's ask Michael these questions to see if he can answer them," and, and he had the answer to every single one.
You knew it.